Planning Commission to the SU-0219 December 17th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up we have roll call. Ms. Luto, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Buckler? Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Murad? Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Trotto?
Here.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda or motions to approve?
Motion to approve. Support.
Could you call the roll, please?
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, next we have communications. We have a variety of communications provided this evening. Several on the multi-tenant buildings at Coolidge and then one referencing the Master Plan Steering Committee. Do you want to just briefly go over that one, Ms. Luto?
Yes, the memo provided to you related to the Master Plan Steering Committee was the memo provided to City Council at the regular meeting, December 16, 2019. And it's just noting the persons who have been nominated for the Master Plan Steering Committee. I wanted to provide that to the Planning Commission as these are the individuals that will be working closely with the Planning Commission over the next 12 to 18 months to get that document in order.
Thank you. All right, next up is citizen comments. Any citizens that have comments for items that are not at the agenda, not on the agenda, we ask you to come forward at this time. There's a sign sheet provided next to Councilmember Gavin, so please sign in there. When you come to the microphone, we ask you to state your name and address and keep your comments to four minutes or less. And as a reminder, the Planning Commission will not engage you in discussion, but we will try to address your comments during the course of the discussion. Does anyone have anything they want to address the Planning Commission on that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the citizen comments.
Chair, if I may?
Oh, yep. The approval of the minutes. Thank you. So move back for a second to the approval of the minutes from the November 26 meeting. Any changes or modifications or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Luto, could you call the roll, please?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, next up, then we'll move on to our regular business for this evening. We have a public hearing to review application SU-0219 for outdoor dining at a proposed restaurant at 2485 Coolidge. Ms. Luto, do you want to give us a brief introduction?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to reference my special use review letter for the outdoor dining for a proposed restaurant. In the Coolidge District where the subject site is at 2485 Coolidge Highway, a restaurant with outdoor dining requires a special land use approval. This would be something that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission to ensure that it meets the five standards of criteria for granting the special land use. And then it would be reviewed by the City Council and if deemed so, approved by them at that meeting. So the review procedures, as I outlined, there are five standards for granting a special land use as set forth in Section 138-653 of the zoning ordinance. I have reviewed the application and the site plan, and I offer the following comments. Number one, the proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. The downtown area is eager and excited for these types of outdoor businesses to continue the walkable pedestrian-friendly atmosphere that we do have here in the city of Berkeley. Additionally, the adjacent Berkeley Frosty Freeze that's located right across Sunny Knoll has an outdoor area, so there's a lot of outdoor activity that's going on in that area. Number two, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at that location. The proposed outdoor dining area will serve the public and it will encourage the walkable friendly pedestrian area of Coolidge District, as I noted before. Number three, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. The subject site is located on Coolidge Highway near the Republica Restaurant and the recently adopted La Solete multifamily development, so it is highly feasible that the new tenants of that La Solete multifamily building would then want to visit a restaurant for entertainment and leisure, and an outdoor dining area would serve that purpose well. Number four, the proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. I didn't see anything in the proposed site plan or supplemental materials that would lead itself to that the public health, safety, or welfare would be in any danger. Number five, the proposed use will not cause injury to other property in the neighborhood. The proposed outdoor dining will be constructed on the south side of the building adjacent to Sunny Knoll. It won't have any impact or bleed into the residential areas, and it will be contained within the commercial Coolidge District. Based on the characteristics of the community and the interest in the outdoor area during the warm weather, I, we recommend, the Planning Commission would recommend approval of the special land use application to City Council, subject to the results of the public hearing and approval of the site plan that will be before you later on this evening.
Thank you. So this item is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this item at this time? Please come forward. Please state your name and address and try to keep your comments to four minutes or less.
Ken Whitmore, 2650 Sunny Knoll. I live down, just down the street from where this is going to be. I do appreciate the fact that this is increasing the outdoor opportunities, the walking and all that, which is, I think, very commendable. My concern about this project is the entranceway off of Sunny Knoll. As was stated, we have the Frosty Freeze on that opposite corner. There's a lot of traffic, a lot of kid traffic and stuff like that. It appears, and I only saw the site plan real briefly, my concern is that the traffic coming into this complex is going to be going through Sunny Knoll, and you're going to increase the amount of traffic on that corner. Concerned about the safety of that corner and what's going on there. Plus, it's, you're losing the traffic, or the parking on that side of it, which is where a lot of the Frosty Freeze people will park, which, now on a personal level, pushes it farther down the street. So that is a concern here. So I guess ultimately, my real concern is just the entryway from Sunny Knoll, and it looks like that's the main traffic pattern, going, turning onto Sunny Knoll into the parking lot and then exiting out onto Coolidge. I guess my thought initially would be, you know, why not have all the entrances off of Coolidge versus that's forcing them down? As, right now, we do have a problem with people trying to cut in behind the traffic light with the road diet and stuff, trying to avoid all that, cutting in behind through Sunny Knoll and back on the Catalpa there. So that's my concern, is the traffic patterns on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? We did not have any communications related to this.
There was one that was included in your packet this evening. It was dated December 6. There was one concern regarding the parking. A resident in the nearby area had noted that there is an overflow of parking from farines and occasionally in Frosty Freeze that encroaches into the residential neighborhoods. So that is a concern that a resident had noted.
There was no other additional communications, correct? Okay.
Can I add one thing to this?
Sure, real quick.
The issue then comes, as was mentioned, is, you know, there's outdoor opportunities for Frosty Freeze. I'm not sure, yeah, everyone is outside of Frosty Freeze. That's how they get service. There is no true seating area or place for them. It forces everybody onto that sidewalk, onto that corner, which is ultimately, the concern is there is a lot of traffic right on that corner. If there was a way to incorporate, and I know it's on the complete opposite side of the road, but if there was a way to give them an outdoor seating area or something to allow that, to alleviate the problem, I know that's a separate, probably a separate issue, but it's related, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that then, I will close the public hearing related to the special land use. And just to address Mr. Whitmore's concerns, some of those items you are mentioning, sir, we'll get into as we get into the discussion of the site plan. Right now, we're just talking specifically about having an outdoor seating area on this particular parcel. So we'll kind of take those items one at a time.
Okay, thank you.
So then, we will move on to the Planning Commission's consideration of the special land use request for outdoor seating. Does anyone have any comments, motions, discussion?
I presume the applicant is here. Okay. I just, just in relation to the outdoor seating, I don't think the lighting is part of the site's lighting plan. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I'm talking about the lighting by the tables by the outdoor area. Can you just comment on what your plans are for that?
Do you mind if I defer to Tim? I think he created the lighting plan, so he can give us more information on that.
It's just the outdoor seating area lighting that I'm asking about.
Sure.
What's your plan for that?
Decorative fixture.
Yes.
Yeah. In that area, the outdoor seating, we're planning on just having one decorative fixture along that area. All of our lighting onsite is full cutoff, so you can't actually see the bulb, LED high efficiency lights.
Okay, and about how many lights will there be?
Be one or two. Wall pack type lights.
And how late do you think that the outdoor area will be typically open? How late at night?
So, at this point in time, it hasn't gone to market to figure out who the potential users could be. But I think if you look at the way the space operates overall, it's a 20, you know, it's under 2,300 square feet, so it's likely going to be some type of coffee user, cafe, and something generally complimentary to the main use, which is what we'll get into here in a little bit, which is the swim school.
Okay, so you're not really contemplating late hours?
I wouldn't address that. Sir, I'm Brian Tomet, I'm the owner of the development, well, the proponent of the development, and also the owner of the swim school, my family and I. And we generally don't like loud, you know, bars next to us. We like a family-friendly environment, so we're looking for tenants that will complement us, as well as, you know, the surrounding community. So we're probably looking for something like a restaurant space that's serving, you know, breakfast, lunch, dinner, things of that nature. We're probably not looking at a food user that's going to be serving liquor into the midnight hours.
Okay, I, you know, I, I know.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, it's definitely a valid concern. We just did a similar development in the city of Woodhaven, and we did a Buddy's Pizza there, which is open till midnight or something along those lines, but we're not looking, like I said, we're not looking to do a, we're very particular about who we co-tenant with, and that's a lot of the reasons why we build our own real estate and go through the, you know, go through the process so that we can control who our co-tenants are in the space and that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, thank you for that comment.
Sure, thank you.
One last question. I note that the outdoor space, the fenced, the fence or the railing that'll be surrounding it is right hard on the sidewalk. Is that anything you can be flexible about? I'm just thinking, maybe it should be a foot back or something from the public right away.
Well, to be frank, the, we're trying to, part of renting that space in a downtown environment is giving a ample, you know, seating space. And we took this right to the lot line, hoping that the committee would be okay with it, not only because we couldn't, we couldn't use that space for buildable space, leasable space. And to be honest with you guys, with the cost of construction and the cost of land in Berkeley, it's very difficult for us to make sense of the development without maximizing the space that we can use on the development. If we're talking about a foot or so, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to talk about it with these guys, but.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Abrow. Design firm for the project, and I'm getting here with Brian Tomet, who introduced himself. Tim Ponton is a design firm for the civil engineer. I know that there is some grading challenges on the Coolidge itself, so by pushing everything afoot will create difficulties with the grading. But in regards of the actual railing, it does sit a few inches from the curb itself. So if you're asking for additional eight inches, we can take a look, you know, into that. But again, the railing itself, most communities do have a railing up to the zero lot line. That's the kind of design theme of the, of the, you know, walkable community, so.
Okay, I'm really just looking for your comments on it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments or discussion?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
I think as far as a, as a, as a use in Berkeley, I think we're looking for this kind of a thing, and we want to promote this kind of a use. And this is an ideal, this seems to be a good spot for that use, that's all. I don't want to get into the dimensions of anything yet, or, we can talk about that in the site plan approval, but as far as a use, I think it's a, it's a good place for it in town.
Anyone else or motions for just the special land use at this point?
I can, Ms. Chairman, if you may.
Okay.
Ms. Luto, you've provided us with these wonderful scripts. We never had these before. I'd like to make a motion to approve, recommend approval. I guess this goes to City Council, correct?
It does, yes, correct.
Okay. So, matter SU-02-19, 2485 Coolidge, recommend approval to City Council for the special land use for outdoor dining for the proposed future restaurant. Do I need to get into the listing, all the findings? You've read them all off. I don't have any issues with any of them.
I think we could say, subject to the findings and conditions listed in the provided motion.
Okay, thank you.
That would be fine.
Yeah, so.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Luto, could you call the roll, please?
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, that's one down. So we will move on to the site plan associated with this. Ms. Luto, did you have anything to add on the site plan specifics?
I would just reference my December 7, 2019 letter. I had laid out, based on the six standards for granting the site plan approval, I went into some detail regarding height, lot coverage, parking requirements, masonry walls, building design, things of that nature. The things that I had noted as needing additional discussion or review by the Planning Commission have been underlined for your convenience. I can go through those one by one if that would be helpful.
Yes, why don't you just really briefly do that?
Okay. So if we look on page number three, there were a couple of things regarding the, and this would be something that the applicant would be able to address as well, in regards to the number of barrier-free parking spaces that are onsite. Per the zoning ordinance, four barrier-free parking spaces are required, and they provided three. Also, the measurements of the van-accessible parking space does not meet the minimum standards, so those would need to be corrected on revised plans. The area designated for the compact car parking area must be clearly signed, as noted in the zoning ordinance, Section 138-222, subsection B. The site plan shows the compact car area being located in the middle between two maneuverable aisles. So signage on that area is going to prove to be problematic. Typically, for compact cars, we have required a staked sign in the ground, and if there's going to be maneuverable aisles that are accessible from each side, it would make signage difficult, unless the Planning Commission determines that painted signs would suffice. I had recommended that the applicant look at that aisle and maybe move the compact cars to adjacent right to the building. That way, the signs could be right up against the building and wouldn't incur any additional space on the lot. And that would be something that the applicant can address. For the parking requirement, we noted that there isn't any specific standard for a swim club, commercial indoor recreation of this type, so we used a private swim club as the measurement for the parking requirement, which is one space per 100 square feet of water area plus one per 30 square feet used for spectator seating. We felt that this was accurate for, not only for the individuals who will be using the area, but as this is geared towards a family-friendly type atmosphere, it would provide requirements for spectator seating for parents, grandparents, friends, whatever. Based on the parking requirements that I've noted here for each individual use and the applicant's desire to include bicycle parking spaces on the site, the applicant has met the required parking requirements for, for all of, all four uses. The applicant has provided a space on the property for the bicycle racks. The applicant should provide a rendering of those proposed bicycle racks to ensure that compliance with the design standards located within the ordinance. I've also noted that there are several flags of sidewalk along Coolidge and Sunny Knoll that need to be replaced. I have recommended that the Planning Commission require a replacement plan for those flags to ensure that they are replaced during the construction phase of the project. Additionally, we have noted that due to the close proximity of residential uses along Sunny Knoll, that a no right turn sign be located at the exit onto Sunny Knoll to prohibit users of the facility, either the restaurant, the retail, or the Aquatot, from incurring additional traffic through the neighborhood, but direct those vehicular traffic onto Coolidge. The applicant has provided some area for parking islands, raised parking islands within the parking area. As provided, those would be impervious surface, so we have recommended that those be replaced with landscaping to provide shade and also to contribute to the aesthetic character of the adjacent properties. Building design is one area that needs to be addressed by the Planning Commission. Part of the, excuse me, part of the design requirements in Section 138-447 requires that there be a minimum of 40%, maximum 80% window coverage on the front facade of a building. The applicant has not provided those dimensions. It appears that they may meet that threshold, but we would request that those be provided to us to ensure compliance. Finally, item C, located on page six, specifically notes that siding generally considered to be residential, shall not be permitted in the Coolidge District. The applicant has provided a rendering with an aluminum siding. Granted, it's a minimal area on the facade, but that would be something that the Planning Commission would need to review and approve. The applicant is not proposing any signage at this time. They will note that a separate sign permit would be, need to be submitted to the building department for review. The applicant would need to include mechanical, the location of any mechanical equipment that would be located on the site, whether it's going to be located on the ground or on the roof, and provide substantial screening measures for those to ensure that they don't obscure any vision on the site. Based on my review and the review from the Department of Public Works and our city engineers of HRC, we noted that there were considerable items that needed to be addressed or reviewed, so we were recommending the Planning Commission to postpone at this time. However, if the Planning Commission determines that the applicant has addressed those to your satisfaction, then I have provided two motions, draft motions for your review, one to postpone and the other one to approve with, with conditions.
Okay, anything from the applicant?
Good evening, madam chair, members of the board. My name is Tim Ponton. I'm the owner of Stonefield Engineering and Design. As John mentioned, we're the civil engineer on the project and design all the exterior aspects. Just to walk you guys through what we're proposing a little bit and to walk through the site plan, we're proposing an 11,690 square foot building that's currently broken up between four different tenants, a 6,370 square foot swim club, two retail uses that are at 1,400 square foot each, and the proposed restaurant that's 2,520 square foot with the outdoor patio that we just discussed. Overall, onsite, we are proposing 77 parking spaces, where 74 parking spaces are required. And we also have the four bicycle spaces that will be provided onsite. We're providing access via two full movement driveways, as proposed, one on Sunny Knoll and one on Coolidge. We do expect the majority of the traffic would enter and exit onto Coolidge. We are mindful of the comment as to the no right turn. It's a common comment that comes up adjacent to residential and one that we agree with and are willing to accommodate. With that being said, there's currently two curb cuts on Coolidge, reducing that down to one, creating safer traffic patterns. There's also two or one and a half current curb cuts in driveways located on Sunny Knoll. It looks like over a period of time that farines needed more parking, so they just kind of provided some type of blockade there and striped in some parking spaces. So although the driveway is not currently in use, there is a driveway that exists right along here on Sunny Knoll, and there's also, looks like, to be a historic curb cut a little bit closer overall on Coolidge. In terms of stormwater management, there's, there's none that exists onsite today. We have it designed to meet the new standards, 100-year requirement that would be provided via an underground storage basin located in this portion of the parking lot here. We've gone through and provided that full design. Being adjacent to the residential neighborhood, we spent a lot of time kind of researching where their windows would be, taking a look at some existing site features. There's five trees onsite that we're planning on saving. Some of them are pretty mature, large trees that we'll save onsite. The one that exists here on Sunny Knoll played a part in the overall placement of the driveway. There's also a beautiful evergreen tree that exists in this portion of the site. In terms of the overall lighting, we've got 18-foot-high poles that meet all of your lighting requirements. Again, they're LED lights, they're full cutoff, so you can't actually see the light, zero light pollution, and we've got full houseside shields located on the lights. This home right here, adjacent, doesn't have any upstairs windows on the house, and this apartment complex right here, this is one of the existing trees that's going to remain, so they're kind of shielded from the residential. But we did take into account, when we were doing the lighting, the residential district, absolutely. Overall, in terms of landscaping, you can see that we'll have a full hedge here, we're saving five trees, planting three additional trees, and we've got 116 overall plants and shrubs. I'm going to let John get into the building architecture here a little bit, and then I'm going to have Brian come up and explain the use.
Thanks, Tim.
With, actually, with Tim's great point is reducing the amount of existing curb cuts. And you know that one of the residents who made a comment that they're the curb cut on the side street for the neighbors. So again, we are eliminating to, just down to one. Not only that, Tim's design is actually moving it further east, so away from the actual resident neighborhoods. Now, it may be, I think, 40 or 50 feet, but again, we're moving it further east. Now, it may be, I think, 40 or 50 feet, but again, we're moving it further east towards Coolidge itself. As the city made a comment or making a left, or left out only, I think that was taken consideration as well. So with regards to the comment from the neighbor about the patio itself, so with Brian's development, a restaurant user is needed for this project. The synergy with the children, with the parents, as they kind of go from their classes and maybe getting a carryout, that's the whole part of the successful development, is the children, with the parents, and again, the walkable community itself. With that said, is that 10-foot of outdoor patio is needed, and we carefully designed it so that it is on the corner, not so that the building is actually on the easier lot line of these residents. And the neighbor had mentioned that where would the ice cream shop to residents or customers would go? Well, again, Brian's developing this to be for his development, regards to the outdoor seating. So I don't believe there'd be any shared, so that was a concern from somebody, so. With regards to the building, yes, we did not provide the calculations when we first submitted, but we recently did provide a calculation with either today's presentation or, I believe Mitch may have emailed that today or maybe not, but either way, we do have it on the plans. We do currently meet the 40%, 80% requirement, but the question is that, is that the entire height of the facade? Because if there's developments that have, where the, we're actually screening the parapet for, or the, for the screening of the mechanical units, it would actually hurt the developments. But either way, we did meet the requirements. So we are 52% along the Coolidge. And if you look at the facade, most communities would measure from zero, from grade to eight feet or 10 feet above finished floor. You look at our development, we actually have over 90% of glazing, so, but because if you're calculating the whole length of it, it would be 52%. So we do meet that requirement. I do have materials here. I believe there was a comment about the siding. So this is not T-111 siding, this is not residential product. It's actually commercial-grade, very expensive, $40 a square foot installed. I mean, it's a pretty high-end product. It's what you would see at Whole Foods in Birmingham. I'm not sure if anybody has been there. It's a material that's being used quite a bit lately because of new materials. You know, it's not, it's a replacement of either ephes or brick, so. I do have all the materials here, if you guys like to see them.
Double frontages and then just some of the material.
Sure, we, so I guess we can go in detail with the material itself. So the brick facade, we do have a portion of the ephes. The heights of the tallest portion of the building is 24 feet, it's in your packet. That height is required so that we do screen all the mechanical units. We are going to have just standard carrier-type units on this roof, so we're nothing over four to five feet, so that's why the 24 is needed on the high point, 22 is on the low point. We have two different heights, it just gives a building character. So we break up building designs with heights, materials, ephes joints, we kind of use that as a design, you know, feature to the buildings. Decorative lighting on the Coolidge side. Most important thing, as Tim was kind of putting in my ear, is that all four sides of the building are designed so that there are frontage. What I mean by that is because when you have these, a lot of these centers, the rear of the building would be a different material, it would just be the larger block size and only one color or, or even without glass. So our building is designed so that the north, south, east, and west would be a storefront design. It's what you guys see a lot on these outlots, downtown areas, Big Beaver of the Worlds, Woodward, things like that, so. Which during this, Coolidge, just the same. Interests on majority of all sides of the buildings and such forth, so.
Yep. So AquaTots is a, I'll give you guys a brief rundown, it's a family business. My brothers and sister and I run it. We started in 2012. Our first location was in Troy, next to the Nordstrom Rack at the 16 and Big Beaver in Rochester. Essentially, we're open from 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Most days, we don't run classes in the morning because kids are in school or parents are busy or whatnot. So most of our times for classes are between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. That's really the highlight of our day. So, you know, as a developer, I try to find tenants that are busier in the morning, that, you know, for lunch crowd and things of that nature, so we can find a balance in the parking lot and not overwhelm the shopping center. We do swim lessons from the age of four months with parents, they're called mommy and me or daddy and me classes, to adults. We have numerous adults in every one of our stores that are coming in and saying, "I've never learned to swim and I'd like to learn today." So we teach kids of all ages and parents of all ages and just people of all ages. We also do, as a measure to bring the community into our business, which is very important for all businesses nowadays, as you guys know, we do a open swim. Our open swim just depends on our availability, but generally speaking, it's from 12 o'clock to 1:00 or 2:00, depending on, like I said, our availability, if we can have employees, if we have employee issues or whatnot. So we do that almost every day, and it's a simple 10 bucks a month for any member of the community, for their whole family. So if you have mom and dad and three kids, it's $2 a month per kid to come in and they can swim every day from 12 to 1:00 or 12 to 2:00. And then in the evenings, we do like a Friday or Saturday night swim from 7:00 to 8:00, so that people in the, trust me, it gets really popular. I mean, in the wintertime, when it's, when it's cold, we could see, you know, 20 people swimming in the pool on a Saturday night at 7:00 o'clock, and you're like, we're, you know, you don't expect this kind of demand, but it exists. We're a franchise based out of Arizona, and we are the developers of the entire Michigan territory, and this would be our, I believe, our eighth store here in the state. So we try to include not only kids, but other community members with the open swim and with things like water yoga, so we do some rehab stuff. If we have a rehab company that wants to come in and use it for like water rehab, we do some aerobics classes, and those are very popular with senior citizens and people that just generally have mobility issues and need to get into the water to, really, I mean, to feel better and to just help the community as a whole. So we're excited, we think Berkeley's a great market for us. Our nearest store to here would be probably 14 in Orchard Lake, we have a Farmington Hills store, and then Troy would be obviously close as well. So I think this fills a much-needed gap. I know that Erin and I were talking, and she mentioned that we have a lot of families from Berkeley that are going to our Troy store and our Farmington Hills store, Roy Logue members, and we just kind of drag people from all over because there's, this use is not really available in the area. It's just not something that's been here traditionally, and we're hoping that we can serve the community, and we're looking forward to it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item?
Can I re, just make an additional comment on this?
Very briefly.
Very briefly. You know, I just want to say that, again, Ken Whitmore, 2650 Sunny Knoll, I appreciate the project and the opportunities that it will provide. I'm a proponent, I don't mind it. The thing I would like to see is that it adds to the beautification of the area, especially along the seating area and stuff along Sunny Knoll. If it, you know, if it makes the area better, I am all for it. I mean, so, you know, I don't want to act like I was negative to the project. My concern was obviously for the traffic pattern and such, but no, as long as, if it's adding beauty to the area, love it.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I will open it up for discussion and comments, questions from the planning commission. Who would like to start?
I can.
Okay, Ms. Kempner.
So my daughter does go to AquaTots in Troy. And we've been there for about three years now. We started during the day when she was not in school. Those were super easy, right? It wasn't very full. Like 5:00 is my cutoff time for when we'll take a class because it gets so busy that you can't even get it, like you have to wait to get into the dressing rooms and they're cold. My worry is the parking, because the pool gets split up into like eight to 10 different zones. There's four kids, up to four kids, and an instructor in each zone, and as soon as this lesson stops, this next one starts. So you have like two classloads of people in there at the same time. So it makes me nervous because that could easily be 30 cars for each class session, and that does make me a little nervous as to where everybody's going to go with a restaurant there as well.
So what we're trying to do, and to be very frank, we're very busy at that store. We believe, generally speaking, we like to get seven or eight miles away from each store, but because of the volume in that store, we realize this area is very dense. It's the most dense real estate market in the state of Michigan. So we're trying to pull some of those customers out of there to alleviate some of the, you know, customers in there. So I do understand what you're saying, and part of the reason that I am building my own building is to be able to control what tenants come in next to me. So the nice part about our development is that, once we really open a store, the tenants, tenants come flocking. You know, they want to be next door to us because we're bringing in fantastic, you know, people that are, you know, affluent, and they want to use these services, and people want to co-tenant with us. So that being said, that's why I told you I probably won't have, we don't like to, you know, we like to control that environment. So we're looking at retail uses that are light parking, you know, things of that nature, and proposed restaurant use sets like, I guess theoretically, if I could pick a tenant off the top of my head, like a Beyond Juice, right? That's becoming very popular, there are juices and smoothies and sandwiches and stuff that are very busy at lunch, where we're not, right? And you've seen it, you've seen it at lunchtime or in the morning, we're very, very, you know, it's very sporadic, our business. So we have theoretically always had in mind what tenants we want, and we will not jeopardize our business to bring in a 2,400-square-foot restaurant, sit-down restaurant user that's busy at dinnertime. It just won't happen. It happened in our Woodhaven Development, but we have 175 parking spots there, so it works out, it's a much bigger property. So I'm completely with you, and I will, you know.
Well, I have some things to add to it.
Ensure that that's not an issue.
So Troy, I as well take my kids there, and to be fair, Troy's actually the first location in Michigan, and currently, it's actually the, it's the smallest square foot today. Not just the square footage, it's also the design, the flow of the space. So if you actually go to Novi anywhere else, so during, at Troy, you kind of get to a point where, yeah, you do see people kind of, parents overlapping with children, but other locations, just because the circulation of the design of the pool and the lockers and the changing area, it's actually a much smoother process. And to be fair with Troy, I get it, it's a bigger parking lot. I mean, you're right next door to Nordstrom's Rack, which is one of the busiest stores you can probably go to. But with that said, Troy is the first location.
Yeah, to be fair, that store's 5,000 square feet. This one we're proposing is about 6,400. So we're trying to.
As more stores open up, you are pulling, and that's the purpose of 14 in Orchard Lake. You pulled customers from the Novi, the parents are coming from Farmington Hills or West Bloomfield. That is a purpose, and eight stores is now the comfort zone where we've mastered the layout itself with corporate. And as well as you are taking those customers back from Troy, for example, we mentioned that people from, parents from Roy Logue are going to Troy. So Troy eventually will slow down at some point, so.
I want to jump in here for a second and kind of piggyback on those comments. So my daughter goes to a similarly fashioned swim school nearby, and parking is a huge problem there.
It's a Goldfish Birmingham?
Yes, yes it is. And I am constantly having to illegally park in the parking lot because there are no spaces available at the time that I go, which is, yeah, which is at 6:30, so it's like prime time. So my question is, I assume you have a similar setup with the lanes as you were describing. How many students do you have at peak time in this building?
Well, theoretically, we can have, based on our pool layout, we could have probably 50, but that would be running at maximum efficiency, and you know, that's never how it is. So I would say at busy stores, we'd probably have 25 kids in the pool at one time. That's probably, well, that store's a little bit smaller, so I mean, if you really look at the kids in the pool, it's hard to say. Some stores are bigger, some are smaller. This size pool, I would say 25 kids will probably be like a standard number from between 3:00 to 7:00 p.m.
So how many lanes across the pool are you running for classes?
This one is not fully designed yet, but generally, we work for 14 lanes, and then we can put four kids in a lane, but that doesn't happen because our toddler classes can be three, and then generally, like, you have, you just don't have maximum, you know, design efficiency. So like, you'll have a level three class going on, which is our most popular class, probably where your children started, level two or three, and those generally, I would say, have three or four, three kids in them, up to four. But then you have a couple level seven classes of kids that are like 10 years old, and there's only one or two in that lane, taking up two lanes. So it's just, it's just all over the board, you know?
So Birmingham, that is the first store in Michigan, right? That is the main company store.
I don't know.
So here, the two examples are the first stores, the busiest ones. Brian, is that, how big is that Birmingham store? Goldfish, is that?
I don't know.
Goldfish is designed a little bit different than AquaTots. Goldfish is almost twice the size square footage is, that's just kind of their model. They're just twice the size of the pool and such forth, so, but with your.
They probably run about, I would say about 14 lanes if you count both sides of the lane.
How many, how many students per, with one instructor?
Three to four.
Okay.
I mean, it's similar, I think.
They have two pools.
They have a baby pool, yeah.
Parking spaces, is that?
There's like 17 people in there.
And the baby, well, every.
They're like up to 12 to 16, the baby.
So I will, I will give you at the, at the evening sessions, the baby pool's pretty much empty. There's no babies there, it's all the older kids at that point.
How many parking?
I'm just offering that, I'm just kind of piggybacking on Ms. Kempner's comments that parking is a concern for me too, just based on personal experience.
I think it's important to remember, overall, there's 77 parking spaces here, right? And when you're looking at these opportunities, the way that we calculated parking was actually independent for each user as if it was a standalone use, and we still meet the ordinance requirement. Now, understanding that this is a bit of a unique type of use, especially with parking, you know, they do operate eight different stores now, and they're going to be the main operator here. So what we'll be looking for is different peak time of day and also shared trips, so people that are already in the lot.
So a question for you then, because we're approving the plan as it stands. We're approving a swim club with retail and restaurant space. 20 years from now, if AquaTots decides to vacate, there can be a swim club here with two retail and restaurant spaces that could be, you know, a busy bar. You know, we really don't know, it would be open to be a restaurant. So we have to make sure we're accounting for different types of situations. So while you say you can control the tenants, which is great, you know, we have to approve the plan in perpetuity. So we don't know that the owner of the building will always control and make sure you have a primarily breakfast tenant there or something like that. So I think that's where a lot of our concerns are coming from.
Well, and they're valid. I mean, I'm not, I'm not telling you they're not valid, but we feel as an operations, from our operations team, which is my sister and my siblings, that this is sufficient. You know, we, trust me, we'd like more, obviously, but we feel that this is sufficient, and if we're, you know, if whatever we can do to address the concerns, you know, all I can say is that we will, we take all of our tenants very seriously and co-brand next to us, and at this site, parking will be at the top of, you know, the top of our consideration for who we're going to co-brand with.
I'm sorry.
I think typically what we see in these scenarios, as well as as new tenants come in, a lot of communities will request shared parking analysis, the ULI shared parking analysis to continue to monitor this, and as new users come in, you guys can have a chance to come in front of the board and review and approve those different users. Because as the ratios kind of change and the users change, all the parking calculations change with it.
So today, we're asking for a certain variance, but in.
There's no variance, we're not asking for any variance.
I think you meet the requirements.
We meet the parking requirements by the ordinance.
My comment was going to be, if they meet the requirements. We're not in a position to deny this application. We can, we can quibble about building design and so on, but.
Correct, but if the applicant was amiable to any conditions to somehow control the mix of uses in there, if they were willing to go with that, then we could look into that. Mr. Smith?
Not to pile on parking, but I was going to talk about this, some Trump talking about. There's about 700 square feet of patio parking at the south end, we talked about that, special use, great idea. I don't think that's accounted for in your parking count.
I don't think it has.
Yeah, so it wasn't originally accounted for in our parking count, but Erin caught that. So in the numbers that I, that I mentioned, it's included. So 76 required does include that outdoor space.
Does it? Not by the calculations, I.
Well, yeah, so we had 67 required, Erin caught that and added it in, so the calculations that I stated today, we're still one heavy.
It's eight additional spaces because of that.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, that's.
On their site plan, they had noted that they were providing, that they were required 67 parking spaces and giving us 77. If you look at my review letter, page four, I did include that, the outdoor space for the eight spaces.
But I think to your point, you know, it essentially, seasonally, that patio is going to be closed, so there will be an additional eight spaces.
And the only reason I bring it up, we're a little sensitive to that because we've had a couple of issues, one. The only reason I bring it up, we're a little sensitive to that because we've had a couple of issues, one recently and one several years ago, that unfortunately this body didn't get to hear. But there are parking issues in our town and that's kind of an internal issue. But, so we are sensitive about that and thank you for clarifying that to me. But I blew by that part as I was reading through it. Thank you.
The family video is to the north, correct, in the Forte Denistry?
Yeah.
I don't have my aerial up right now, but.
It's right there.
No, yeah, I just can't see, is there a wall separating those two properties right now?
I don't think.
There is. The building is right there.
There's the building.
There's also vegetation.
But there's a spot that the parking lots would be adjacent to one another, correct? Go back to your site plan.
Right here, near the backside.
Right here.
Where we keep the tree.
Yes, there's a wall there and there's also vegetation and trees and.
Okay. I was going to suggest a shared parking agreement with them, just to take care of any overflow parking if you needed it, but if there's a wall, that doesn't work.
We could do, I mean theoretically, we could do it, but I don't know how I'm going to get them to agree to it.
I mean, we could request.
But it never hurts to ask, I guess, was my point. Okay. Does anyone have anything else on parking before I go back to Ms. Kepner, because I interrupted her comments?
Sorry, I have one comment. I agree, I mean, they've met the parking requirements based on all of it. So if the parking is an issue for the swim school as it is at other places, that's not really, my personal opinion is the board's decision. The business will limit itself if people are frustrated with the parking, since they do meet our requirements and our ordinance.
Well, I guess, but you're right, that they do meet the requirements, but I do think it's our responsibility to discuss it and try to address any issues that could come up creatively if we can think of a solution.
I would agree, and I don't know that swim club is necessarily the same as swim school. Like their, swim club, I think, is a much calmer use. But since I searched and I didn't see anything else that was more appropriate, you know, yeah, I don't know that there's much we can do with the parking, but it makes me nervous because if people start parking on the side street, people, like, they're going to get upset and.
Respectfully, I will do everything in my power to make sure that my business is not impacted by my parking if it means that I have to leave a, you know, a unit vacant until I find an all-state agency that has one person working there. You know, so just, just understand that I am as conscientious of it as you are because my primary focus here is not a shopping center developer. It's to get a store open and serve the community. So I want you guys to know that I'm not going to just slam this thing with any tenants I can get because parking can become an issue for me.
Plus, I'm guessing in the middle of February, walking to the car with wet-headed children isn't necessarily going to be fun if they have to go down the block to do so.
Exactly. So like I said, I'm not just building a center here to build a center like you would see a lot of developers coming here. I'm building a center to houses for home for my business. So that's my overall objective, is to make sure that my customers come first and that there's no problem.
How many employees normally typically run at the school?
We have two behind the counter and then one for every zone. But we're never, like I said, we're never, there's never 14 in the zone. So probably at most 10, eight to 10 during our peak times.
Okay, and that's just for the swim school, so that, so that's 10 cars?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I'm not familiar with the ordinance, but does the street parking apply to any of this?
It does not.
The street parking would be available.
It would be available, but it doesn't count towards a parking requirement. Yeah, I was just, per Councilman Gavin's.
It does help, yeah.
Suggestion, I was looking at that and there are probably about six or seven on-street parking spaces that could.
Plus, they would theoretically have the spaces across the street as well.
On the other side.
They can, no shared parking agreement could be entered into for anything across. The on-street could be, could be used for that because that's always public, yes.
Yep. Okay, anything else, Ms. Kepner, besides the parking?
I mean, besides that, I love the idea.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
I think it would be something that the community would really like.
I have one question on your, are we still done with parking or no?
I think we're done with parking for the moment, yes.
On your elevation on the south side, you're showing something that looks like a light post or something. What exactly is that? It's only on your elevation. No, on your elevation.
That was a decorative light, just serving the patio, but that has been removed though, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I liked it.
I'm a lighting guy, so I mean, as far as I'm concerned, anything out there that adds to it is a good thing, so.
All set for now?
There was just one question I had, I didn't see on the overall site photometric, so.
Good catch. Mr. Smith?
There were a lot of questions from our consulting engineers, but a letter came out recently, I think I received it today or yesterday. They, they addressed most of those issues. Some of the, I'll just go through this. Additional barrier-free space, we talked about that. Now, as far as the, the compact car spaces, needing to be signed, if they just flipped that middle compact and put them on the, either towards the building as was expressed or along the east wall, east edge, that would solve their problem, so.
If I may, just kind of give our thought behind the design and the way that we have it. We would prefer to, to actually not have actual posts with signage and we'd prefer to do it with striping. Now, what I can tell you is, for whatever reason, this community, especially being a walkable type of community, has the largest requirements for parking spaces almost in the entire state of Michigan, so.
We know that.
Even though we're calling these compact spaces, there's still nine by 18 with a 24-foot drive aisle, which is a typical parking space anywhere across the entire United States. So, you know, we don't have a concern realistically, we're kind of using that to our advantage. We think that, you know, even all of these 20s is somewhat overkill. So these are still typical regular-sized parking spaces that you'd see at Home Depot or anywhere else in the world. If we have to, if you guys really forced us into it, what we would do is, is our first option, obviously, is the striping that would say compact car. We don't want to use them against the building because this is prime parking, people that maybe have trouble walking. We don't want to like dedicate all those to be necessarily compact car. If we had to make the switch, we would put them back here. But we, you know, we do feel as designers that they're best serviced within this area. We would be willing to put posts in the spaces if that's what you guys required and made you feel more comfortable and the spaces would operate just like any other space. You pull in, you back out. We don't think it's necessary, necessary. We think it's, it's kind of self-explanatory with the striping, but we're willing to take your comments and apply it however you see fit.
The additional length of the space against the building gives more room for the walkway. So having that compact car in the center, again, nine by 18, I think most compact cars are like six by, or 16 by eight?
They're lots smaller than nine by eight.
So we would actually gain, if we go back to the smaller compact, we actually gain more parking spaces. So if actually you guys want to give us more, reduce the compact car size and get more parking spaces, that'd be great too. But I think the 20, the 20 length, the 20, 20-foot depth would actually give us more room against the building, especially for children walking back and forth. So it does make sense if they put against the building rather than center.
Ms. Luto, on our, on our typical parking spaces, we call for 20-foot deep parking spaces.
We do, correct.
We have in the past used 18-foot spaces with a, you know, assuming a two-foot overhang on the front. Whether it's landscaping or at the north, north wall, instead of a five or five and a half foot drive or sidewalk, I'm sorry, we'd have a seven and a half foot sidewalk. That's not in our ordinance yet. We're in the process of looking at that. I'd ask the applicant if they'd be amicable to, especially along the north and along the building, to reduce these spaces to 18 feet and add sidewalk against the building, easier to walk. And then, because most people do park, drive until they hit something when they park, we all know that. And, but also, and I don't know what you're, I assume you're repaving the entire site with the underground and all that.
That's right.
So along the north, reduce those to 18 feet and let's pick up a couple of feet of landscaping, previous material.
Yeah, I mean, our intention was to have a variance free and, you know, not ask for any relief across the board. As designed, we're 100% variance free, with the exception of the special land use, obviously. So as designers, we think that they're too big, especially the way that things are moving, but that's what your ordinance dictates. So, you know, we, we took all the liberties we could by using as many 18s as we could and placed them as appropriate. But if that's, I guess, something that this board could, go ahead.
If I may, are they eight by 18? Because our ordinance is eight by 16 for the compact car.
They say eight by, they say nine by 18, actually.
For the compact car?
Yeah.
So eight by 16?
Yeah, our ordinance allows eight by 16 for compact.
Pick up a couple of spaces.
Perfect. I'd like that, I saw.
And widen the drives or widen the sidewalk.
I'd like that.
But against the building, and again, it's not in our ordinance, but we've done it in the past.
Do we have, Ms. Luto, do we have the authority to modify the space sizes? I mean, I like that idea too.
Are you saying we're running along the main length of the building?
Well, along, along the north and the west side and along the north property line, instead of a 20-foot deep space.
Do an 18 and.
Do an 18 and.
Two more feet of parking lot?
Two more feet, two more feet of sidewalk against the building.
You want to keep these 20 feet.
So he actually, originally.
I would be, I think.
He wanted a deeper sidewalk along there, but.
I would, because people are going to drive till they hit it, so now you really have four feet of sidewalk, I'd rather see it.
I don't want to, I don't want to have to go through a special variance for it.
Well, that's, that's what we're looking at, that's, that's what we're looking at right now.
I have no problem.
We've done it, we've done it in the past.
That's good to hear.
Officially are authorized to do it.
And you were thinking the same thing along the side that backs up to the residential there and picking up a little bit of landscaping? Is that what you were saying?
You could do it there too, I was, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's a wall there?
Yes.
There's a big wall there.
We'll talk about that wall.
It's not that big.
It's not.
It's small.
And tilted.
We tend to beautify it, paint it. I really don't see how we could put landscaping in it, I'll tell you why. People are going to just drive into it all the time and then when I push my snow into it, it's all going to get demolished.
But the point is to pull the curb back two feet so they hit that before they hit the wall.
On the, on the, on the building side?
No, the other side, you could pull the curb back if we're, if the compact spaces get reduced to 16 feet. And then you could pull the other spaces back two feet, now you have four feet with a two-foot overhang.
Against the, against that back wall on the residential side. I'm okay with whatever the suggestion would be, as long as I don't have to put any landscaping in there because I already know it's going to die, it'd be a nightmare.
You don't think there's a tree you could find that you could put a couple in there to?
Probably put a couple of trees in it, yeah, but I think if you want it for bushes and mulch, it's, I just, I just know from experience that the more landscaping you have, especially on back walls like that, it just gets crowded.
I think we'd be okay with trees.
I'm not going to get in, I'm not getting into this discussion, I'm just trying to figure out.
I think we have the authority to vary the parking.
Yeah.
I only see for the aisle widths.
For the widths?
The aisle width, I see that we have the ability for aisle widths. I don't see anything that lets us.
I do not want to change aisle widths.
Change the parking size.
So maybe you can look into that while we're talking here, Ms. Luto, and get back to us. Do you have anything, any other comments then, Marty?
Yes. The, the, the drive onto Sunny Knoll, the engineers made the statement about left turn only, no right turn, you know, going east only. I think we've talked about that a little bit, I think it's come up. I think we'd like to see that configuration to discourage, you know, people are going to do it, they're going to do it. You can't, you can't police it, so to speak. But I think we, I would like to see that reconfigured to discourage people turning west out of the parking lot.
Residents are going to use this building though, that will need to turn right out of that parking lot to go into Sunny Knoll to go back to their homes.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but it does discourage the use of other people. And, and we've had a citizen here speak more than once about that and he's absolutely right. You know, it does, it does happen. And it's something we've done before in town. And, and the engineers also brought it up too. And we'd like to see that reconfigured in some, I would. I don't know about how the rest of the commission feels about that. But just to discourage and assign, no right turn. People who live there are going to do it anyway and they can explain that to the officer.
When you say reconfigured, you mean, you mean a curved, a curve?
Yeah, it would be just a little pork chop placed in there to discourage the right out.
A radius.
Right.
Yeah, with a sign. And then, like I said, they can explain to the officer that they live five stories down and work that out. So did you figure?
I didn't find anything in our ordinance that, that gave the planning commission the authority to modify the size of, of the parking spaces.
We've talked about it.
I wish I could have found it.
Well, we have done it in the past, not whether.
There's nothing that specifically says it can and nothing says it can't, so.
I, I, I'm throwing that out, I'd really like to do it.
So.
It's safer along the building and adds a little green space along the edges, so.
So the plans could potentially indicate a paved parking area that's 18 feet long and indicate a two-foot overhang as part of the parking space?
Curbs get pulled in, oh, sorry.
I guess I'm just talking out loud, is that how we could show a 20-foot parking space?
I think that would work.
Yeah, 18 plus two-foot overhang.
Yeah.
Clearly indicated on the plan.
We do it all the time in other communities. Right, I'm sure you do too.
I, I would agree with that recommendation.
And even more so at the building because, like I said, they're going to pull up till they hit the curb and now you have a four-foot walk or a three and a half foot walk. So let's make them seven and a half or eight-foot walk, so you have an ample walkway around the building.
Agreed.
Our original design intent was, was actually to have something that was nine or 10 feet wide at, at this side of the building. You know, so if we could take these all down to 18 and add the four foot to the sidewalk, that was.
You could take the compact down to 16.
There's two there and two against the building.
Don't know if, I just.
18 is.
If we go 18 here and we go 18 here, here, we still pick up four feet and then every single parking space is kind of still usable and functional, right?
That's totally fine.
But will the same overhang apply? I mean, because that's a wall there on the other side, right?
You're talking about the west side?
You'd have to leave those at 20.
No, you wouldn't have to leave those at 20 because you'd have a four-foot green belt.
Well, we're talking about two extra feet, two extra feet, yeah.
Two feet from the wall.
Oh, yes, if you kept the compact, compact at 18.
And then the wall.
Yes, you're right.
It just gives you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It gives them more spaces if you guys switch it to eight feet wide instead of nine?
Well, absolutely, down the middle, you might pick up a space or two.
A space or two.
Well, there's 17 spaces, a foot, you'd pick up two spaces.
Yeah, so that's good.
So I mean, that would, that would help your parking.
Help our concerns.
Help your concerns more so.
But it also limits the parking to a certain extent.
So Tim's saying, keep it at nine by 18.
Then everybody can typically park there, you don't have a truck pulling in just because you picked up a space or two.
Oh, because he might take two.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Can't park or fit in 15 of the spaces, then you're really kind of limiting yourself.
Isn't the trend toward bigger vehicles?
It is.
Well, it was supposed to go smaller and now all of a sudden they're making.
It's not working, is it?
Well, with children, I see a lot of children.
Children have big vehicles.
Big vehicles.
I think if we, if we.
Width is more important than length right now.
If we could consistently keep nine by 18s with 24-foot drive aisles, I think everybody would be, feel very comfortable that everybody could park here.
Yep, and throw the two feet into the north, green space at the adjacent property. Throw the two feet into the north sidewalk and the west sidewalk of the building.
Agree, we would be agreeable to that.
Great.
Okay.
That, that helps us, I'd like to have a bigger sidewalk.
Oh, absolutely, I think it's safer by your own.
We've got the same problem in the development we just did in. I see these big trucks pulling in and they take up three feet of sidewalk and you're.
There's also kids walking outside was your main concern.
With frozen hair. Not watching where they're going. Let's see, what else do I have here? Is this a transformer down at the bottom off the west, southwest corner? Is that your transformer?
Right here?
Yeah. Because you need one somewhere, I'm just.
Yep.
That's where it is.
Okay.
Utilities coming off of Sunny Knoll.
Yeah. Okay. The engineers talked about the roof drains, the response was that it hasn't been all worked out, but I imagine they're going to drain internally and then out into the storm retention.
That's accurate.
Okay. Okay. And roof screens, we talked about. The parapet walls are rather, I assume they're rather high on this building compared to where the roof level.
Right.
Sometimes roof screens draw more attention to something on the roof than it would anyway, but how, how high do you anticipate?
Five to six foot overall on the parapet.
That's, that's going to cover most of all.
So we don't have to actually do a separate screening. The parapet will act as our screen.
Absolutely. I'd rather have that.
Better for North.
Yeah, looks nicer.
Better for Northford residents there by the mason, the wall.
Yep. The little landscaping place up in the northeast corner. It looks nice. I guess it's a, is that a photo op location for the Farina's right now, up in the northeast corner of the property?
Currently, yes.
Okay. The inside looks fine. The outside's getting kind of beat up. The faces the street and the neighbor. That's going to be removed, I assume, right? You could take photos of children with their wet hair or frozen hair up there, but.
I, I don't think we have any photo booths.
But it is. It looks like there's a little bench there and.
Are you talking about right here?
Yeah, there's some.
There's some sort of screening up?
Yeah, with a bench. Okay, that's going away.
It's going to be a typical landscape island.
Relandscape that.
Yep.
There's a, there's a little bit of masonry there that's all kind of beat up, the lawn, just, fix that.
Yeah, some sort of lattice. It's like a lattice.
Yeah, and it's fine. It serves a purpose. And it serves the purpose of Farina's fine, but it doesn't really serve a purpose anymore. And it does kind of obscure sight, sight angles, people pulling in and pulling out.
The cement falling part is the kids walking on it.
I know.
Kids have been walking on it for thirty years, so it's kind of, it is falling apart.
By the way, we will miss your facility here. That's, that served a lot of purpose for a long time. It served Berkeley well, so. And I didn't do the math on the number of windows, but I used the, the Design Professional Squint Test, and it, you're at, I figured about fifty percent, but you did the calculations since, so we're fine. Now, the biggest issue is the west wall. Of the, the concrete wall. It's in relatively poor condition. There's a big section, a rather large section that's tilting into your property. It's not six feet high. What do you really plan on doing with it?
Our intention with the wall was, subject to us getting approval, we would engage a structural engineer. We would have that structural engineer let us know if it was possible to re, not only reuse that wall, but also add on to that wall and/or build something around that wall. And if that was possible to clean it up and make it six feet and reuse it, that would be our first option. If it wasn't, then we would come back and build a new wall if it was required.
Yeah, I think you might have a hard time adding on to that wall. I didn't get out and measure it. I measured, I just figured it's about four-and-a-half feet tall, and this is our opportunity to get it repaired, you know, to upgrade the site, as we would do in any site. I'd like to see it replaced. If you, if your structural engineer comes back, we don't like those cast masonry. A lot of communities, including ours, are trying to get away from the cast concrete walls anyway. Because they do, they tilt, they fall apart, they, they move a lot. This is me speaking, but I'd like to see it replaced. Unless, if it can be repaired and heightened, go for it, but I don't, I don't know if that's going to happen. I don't know what any of the other commissioners feel.
I would agree. It would be good to see it replaced, and if you can get, get a tree or two in there, I think that would be great.
Okay, elevations. What are you, the materials? Do you have samples?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to see those. Can you pass them around? Do you have them on a board or something? Do they weigh a thousand pounds?
Not light.
Now, C-brick, for everybody who knows, I believe is concrete brick. Is that your intention? What's the, what's the size, face size of the brick?
I'll let John talk about that.
Okay. Not that it's a problem.
I was interested in the size, too.
They, they're four inches by sixteen, so the height of four inches and the width of sixteen. So we're not, nothing here is being the eight by sixteen, you know, the standard CMU size. These are what they call C-bricks, the half eyes, so. So I'll present the two colors and then the, obviously the different materials as well, so.
Okay, if you just do a quick, from the, get to grab the microphone so everybody, the thousands of people watching at home can.
So these are the two materials, Grand Blank and Michigan Product, which is really cool. So that is the, the, these are two colors. They're going to be around the facade of the building itself.
Could you flip to the elevation and kind of show us where?
So it's probably, you know, basically the structure of the building around the storefronts, above the glazing, yeah, so you have the two different colors.
That's the dark, okay, and then that's the white.
The light one, correct. And then here is the longboard.
What about the back?
The back is the same material, so.
Do you have rendering at the back?
Not a color rendering, no.
Okay, is that all one color?
Yeah, that's.
In the back?
Yeah, so, yes, we have a couple of different, well, I mean, the building, the materials being used to, two different areas around all four sides.
What are the colors on the back, John? Is it all white? Is it all, is it some of this?
Is it all white? Is it all black? Is it a?
The columns black?
The columns are black, and then above the storefronts are going to be white. So, yeah, along this wall here, this will be the white color, so it does break up the, the entire length of the building.
Okay.
So the longboard itself, you'll see it on a few different sides. The, the Coolidge, then you have somewhere on the patio itself, and here's a couple of, here's the actual product that got itself. So as I mentioned before, this is you being used in Whole Foods in Birmingham.
Anybody want to see these or?
No.
Okay.
I have some of these sitting on my desk right now, so we're using them on projects.
Which project is that? Like, are they mostly for, like, retail and also the hospital?
Yeah, it's retail.
Chicago, New York, I mean, they're using high-rise buildings, apartment buildings, so it, because I saw that comment about the siding, you get a.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not standard metal siding. It's a little more sophisticated. And light cherry, is this the color?
Actually, yes, so it's the, I think we chose dark cherry. Did I bring the light cherry with you?
So it's, it's only. It's the light cherry.
It's only a shade or two, I think, a little darker. Yeah, it's like the product is the female male groove, so it's, it's long-lasting product, so.
And then EIFS, you have a couple splotches of EIFS.
Yeah, a couple areas, so this is the color itself, so it's.
Is it going to be the, this, this texture?
Yes, seraphish, yeah.
And where is that going?
A couple spots, you know, the front, the south, yeah.
So a very.
East corner. Side where the restaurant user is, or should it be on the basic Coolidge's east, and then around the corner on Sunny Knoll, there'll be a little.
So very much an accent material?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll be that stuff.
We really wanted to make this look nice. I mean, this is not an inexpensive product that we're using. So, but, like I said, it is a home for our business, and we take our business seriously. We didn't want to, you know, just throw up something that was all block and cheap materials and stuff.
Let me ask you a question. You got some very stark whites. The, 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 the concrete brick, I almost said block, concrete brick and the EIFS. You going to be able to keep it all clean?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The back might be a perfect place for a mural.
On the back wall?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not against it, guys. I, like I said, you're, you're looking at somebody who takes it very seriously.
Microphone. You'll get, you'll get a phone call probably about that.
Uh, yeah, no, we'll keep it clean. I mean, I, you know, we're not, we're not just, you know, we're property owners in multiple cities with our schools, and you sit by our properties, you'll say, wow, they really do a nice job of it, so it's not. You know, we've got a boutique product. You guys know. If you don't keep it clean, and we, we're going to run a, a nice school, so. I think Lisa might be able to tell you that we probably keep it nice. It's probably pretty clean, right?
Yes, I do not have any complaints about the cleanliness.
So.
I had.
A lot cleaner than Goldfish.
I haven't been to an Aquatass. This would be a lot closer.
What's she's, what's she's the photometric sound, so I don't lose.
Somewhere around C seven-ish.
C seven? Thank you. Yep, 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 yep. Thank you. There's a little spill over at the north end. At the parking lot, at the commercial building, on the west side of the parking, on the west side of the commercial building. So I don't know if your shielded fixture hasn't been calculated right, but there is a little spill over there. I don't mind it because it's another commercial area, but our ordinance doesn't read that way.
I think the ordinance actually reads that you have to be less than one-foot candle adjacent to it. Do you see a number that's?
Yeah, they're all point fours and point threes, so you may be okay.
It's point five.
And then, and, and there's magically no spill over along the west wall.
Magically?
Right.
I see, I see in the ordinance, section one thirty-eight dash fourteen B two, level lighting should let exceed point five at any residential property line or one-foot candle at any non-residential.
You got some pretty heavy-duty foot candles right along the wall on your side, but there's nothing on the other side. So the right answer is the wall comes into play.
We're talking about the west, the western property line?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a wall, and then we've also modeled some of the existing trees that are to remain.
So that's the right answer. The wall comes into, this wall or the future wall, okay. And that's a, that's a legitimate answer, so I should let you tell me that, but.
A lot of kids in the parking lot. We need to light it up.
Absolutely, I don't, no issue with that.
Safety is our first priority, so.
So anyway, that was one of my comments on the photometrics. Other than that, you know, I, most of them are the technical things. Like I said, I think they address most of HRC's comments. There were still some. I don't know if that changed their opinion. I don't believe their letter, the original letter said they suggest it be postponed until this is all corrected.
Their initial letter that was included in your packets noted that they didn't feel that the planning commission should approve it based on the outstanding items. However, Stonefield Engineering had provided that, that letter addressing each of those concerns. I forwarded that on to HRC and spoke with our, the engineer representative, Berkeley, this afternoon or this morning, and he noted that the. Comments or that the, the, the letter that Stonefield had provided addressed enough of the concerns that they felt comfortable as long as the, anything that was still outstanding was addressed during the final engineering, which we agree it would be.
It's nothing that can't be done administratively.
If the planning commission feels that that's the appropriate course, yes.
At least for the engineering. Well, we don't look at all.
We'd be happy to, to go through them point by point if it, if it made the commission feel more comfortable. A lot of these are very detailed construction-type of comments, and I'd say another thirty percent of them are just stating that we need outside agency approvals. You have to get county approval, soil erosion, and things of that nature, but it's nothing that would have any impact on the plan that's being.
I read the letter. I have no, I have no additional issues with it, knowing that they're watching our backs there, and I don't know if anybody else wants it to be, anything to be explained.
And when I wrote my review letter, it was in, prior to receiving those comments from HRC. So based on their comments, based on the concerns of DPW, and based on the review that I had put forth, there were a number of things that needed to be addressed.
Right.
I feel like we've addressed a number of those things.
We still have a few.
Of course.
And, and.
Don't we typically approve, subject to approvals by the other, the other?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, if we approve.
Yeah, if we approve.
That's what we're looking for, so.
So I have a, I have a question. Can you comment on your snow removal plan? What are you going to do in the event of a big storm?
Yes, I haven't thought it through, to be very frank. The good news is most of our business is done in the summertime. That's when our, we're our busiest, so we drop off considerably in the wintertime, so.
Typically, what happens is if there's any.
Push it on the Coolidge. No.
Cut the traffic down.
We'll find, I mean, I guess we'd have to find, like. We could, we could truck it outside, or we could theoretically put it in the all-three corners and kind of take up a spot in all three corners and, you know, or push it up. You know, it's, it's just.
We've got a little area, if you take a look next to the trash enclosure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that works.
There's an area, and then to the south, there's about four or five feet for an opportunity to, to push some snow as well, and, and then also in the photo booth area.
I would think that further away from the residential portion of the, of budding residential, the, the more satisfied we'd be.
I don't, so next to the trash enclosure, there's no.
Two-foot area we just gained?
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Maybe push the wall back.
Okay, these are my concerns. I'm ready to make a motion, but I just want to run by the things that I think, and some we've already had an amicable discussion about. Parking space size. Whether or not it says in the ordinance, you know, we have the power and not the power to do, I think, I think we want to address that here. It's a much safer thing. Eighteen-foot instead of twenty-foot. And provide the, plus a two-foot overhang, if that can be described on the drawings. And then that increases the, the north sidewalk to seven-and-a-half feet. And the west sidewalk to at least eight. Were you going to say ten? Did, did you offer ten?
Whatever additional area we have left, we'll put it in the sidewalks.
It is, it's probably.
It's plenty.
Yes, if they should.
I'd like the drive, egress, drive to Sunny Knoll to be addressed. In some manner, let, let our engineers tell us the best way to do that. We kind of know what it is, but with signage, no right turn. And whether it's a pork chop or however, a radius. And I'd like them to really consider rebuilding that wall. It's in pretty bad shape. But if they can come back and say they can add on to it to make it properly ten, or I'm sorry, six feet high and straighten it up a little bit, we'd consider that. I don't know if this requires, I don't know if there's anything else. Was there anything else that I missed? Is anybody else picked up?
I had a few other questions, just in general.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So mine was mostly on the facade. We have these design guidelines that are out there on the downtown, the DDA website. They're not officially adopted, but they, they are out there as guidelines right now in a draft form. And there was a couple of things I picked out, and I was wondering if you might consider. One is canopies along the frontage.
I think we do have some, John, don't we?
Do you?
Yeah, we have some sunshade areas. If you look at the rendering itself.
It's hard to see them because they're flat.
Yeah.
So we've got some.
Okay.
It sticks out by eighteen inches from what I saw.
Okay.
It's not, it's not colorful, but it's a, it's a band.
Okay.
You can see it on there.
And is, you have some lighting on the frontage there, it looks like?
Yes.
Yeah, the wall packs?
Here, the kind of overhangs, that go along here, just the sunshade itself is. Decorated, I've been writing in architecture, I'm going to know sunshade, or use for technical purposes for sun, but I like them on buildings, so.
Okay, that's good. The, the lighting and the canopies were kind of the two things I picked out of the design guidelines that I was wondering if you'd be willing to incorporate, but good to see that they're already there. The other question I had was on the windows. Are those going to be tinted?
No. So for purposes of rendering.
Microphone, please.
So for purposes of the rendering itself, we don't actually.
Let me add, the Aquatass ones maybe.
I figured those might be.
So we've tinted them in our other stores, and we have sun beating in on parents who are sitting there. So, oh, John, yeah, isn't that where the changing rooms are?
So those will be tinted.
That'd be inconvenient.
Yeah.
Isn't that where the changing rooms are?
Correct, so.
So it'll be spandrel glass.
Yeah.
For those.
Just the Aquatass portion.
Just the Aquatass portion. Any other tenant that chose to tint it could do that. I wouldn't be against it. But definitely the Aquatass portion will be spandrel glass. It won't be tinted like where somebody comes and puts a tint on it. It'll actually be built into the glass, so it'll never peel, it'll never, you know, fade or anything like that, bubble. So it'll just, because that whole side is our changing room areas, and obviously, we don't want.
So the whole. No, the whole frontage then is covered by the changing room area. There's not a reception area or something where you could have the corner be clear-vision glass?
I'd have to look at the layout that we have, but I believe the entire area is based on our current floor plan, conceptual floor plan, is changing area and like, and like, well, the area where you change and get ready and stuff, so it'll probably all be.
Okay.
It's very difficult for Aquatass. I mean, it needs, you, you, we need a couple of walls that are completely blocked off, and the parking is in the back, so it's catch-22, or it's very difficult for us to design it perfectly.
The glass in the rear wall on the, on the backside of the parking lot will be see-through, and we intend on putting our pool back there, so you could, when you park in the parking lot, you're going to have to see directly into the pool.
So this would just be my personal preference, but if you could keep the remainder of the glass as, as clear-vision glass, I think it helps to activate the street front a little bit more.
That's a problem for me.
Okay.
In regards to the continued of the building, yes.
And I don't see why any other tenant would want to do that.
Right, if they're retail.
Matter of necessity, or we can, or we just wouldn't even have these windows theoretically, so these windows are a nice design feature. We want them, we, we need code with them, but unfortunately, because of our layout, I do have to tint them, but everything else, to me, can stay.
Okay, good.
Okay, how much of the glass is going to be taken up by spandrel glass?
I think that.
Show you with my fingers?
Yeah.
It's half. This is not ours?
That's a lot of glass.
It is. Yes, it is.
That's a large portion of that building. You're not going to see anything in. The whole point behind the master plan is to be able to see in and see what's going on and make people look and see like there's something going on. I mean, some of the things I see going on, like some of the items on Twelve Mile, I mean, you look at the buildings, it's just a black piece of glass. It's pointless to me, I think.
So that was.
I'd much rather see it flipped around the other way, where I see the pool and everything going on there from the front and the back. It completely just, just goes against the whole idea of trying to draw to the community. That's drawn to the parking lot.
Yeah, but, oh, and to be fair, so the, the calculation between forty and eighty percent, is that complete square footage of facade of a building, or is that from finished floor to a certain height?
It's the facade of the building to the coping, not including screens. It's the facade of the building to the coping, not including screens. You meet the spirit, you meet the spirit of the, of the ordinance in area, but that's a very good point. The whole point of the ordinance.
It's just black off the wall.
But my.
Yeah. The whole point of the ordinance was to see activity from the road. Now, there's certain functions that you don't want to see activity.
I don't disagree with you.
But that, this is my concern, that we're trying to activate the street front. But we're not really doing that, even though you're meeting the, the strict requirements of the ordinance. And that is kind of why I, I mentioned the design guidelines, which talk about not having spandrel glass. Unfortunately, they're in draft form. So this is kind of like a please make it clear vision glass.
We won't do any of the other glass in the building, including the Sunny Knoll side and the side on the facing, like, the family dollar for the acquitats.
Do you have an aversion that if the pool was on the east side of the building, I don't know what your floor plan is, do you have an aversion that people can see inside the building?
No, I do not have an aversion to that. Like I said, on my pool side window, I'm okay with it. We have to talk about that internally, John, and see if we can flip it. But if I can't flip my layout because of certain code requirements, rear door accesses, things of that nature, I don't know how, I don't know how I can, can, can exist without it. I guess what I could do is, I mean, this looks worse, is furred out and put drywall up and then build my walls. And you're looking at the back of drywall, so you don't want to do that, right?
But my whole thing is, it doesn't draw, it doesn't improve the community. It's just a black wall on twelve, on Coolidge then.
We don't, we don't want to do that, but if there's, if there's a way.
I'll look into moving, I'll look into flipping the.
Even some of it.
Yeah, I'll look into, I'll look into flipping it. If we can flip it, I think it's actually a very nice idea that we can put the, we can put the, we can put the pool on the Coolidge side, and people can actually see it as they go by. It's maybe not a bad.
It's great advertising, actually.
It is.
Can you?
Just comparing it to some of the stuff I see on 12 Mile, where all you see is blacked out windows. It just doesn't help.
Well, that was my concern. Yeah.
I have a question about that. Can you, can you break down?
Sol, I'm sorry. Sol, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Can you, that, that large area with the, it's got two, the two lower roofs and then the, the higher roof, that's all changing area? All of it, right now?
There may be a portion, there may be one set of windows that are not.
Well, I mean, some parts is.
Sounds pretty large.
From here to here's restrooms.
Okay.
You know, from here to here's restrooms, and from here to here, from here to here's my changing room, and then here's probably a little, you know, seat area.
So here's the reason I don't put the pool in the glass, and I apologize. I, I just wasn't thinking. Our pools are like ninety-one degree, three hundred and sixty-five day a year.
Yeah.
Humid environment. So when it gets cold outside, my glass starts to decompose, the seals start to crack. It's, it's really a live environment, right? So in the past, what we've seen, a lot of times, is it becomes an issue for us. You know, it's hard to, when it's against CMU wall, when it's against block wall, it's a, it's a lot more, we've got a lot more longevity.
That's why.
I guess in the, that's why we have a block wall back there. In the wintertime, if you drive by these things, and I have, and I have windows, they're fogged from head to toe.
So maybe there's a way, and I know you probably have a standard layout, but perhaps a portion of that could be the, the entrance reception area, where you can make that portion the vision glass. Or maybe you have a small hall or, or something like that, where you could incorporate some aspects to, to activate the street front.
I will definitely look into it. And I understand what you guys are saying, and I think it's a great idea. The only, my only drawback is windows and ninety-degree wind, you know, outside windows and ninety-one degree pool air, it just becomes a mess for us.
I don't think we're well served by foggy windows.
No, but the changing area and the pool area are separated by a barrier, correct?
Yeah.
So the changing area windows would not get, get fogged. They shouldn't.
No, the changing area windows not get fogged, but we can't have changing area windows because our windows, our changing areas are a long.
But if you had a small reception area up there, or a small hall, or, or some way to incorporate some clear glass in that area.
Uh, like I said, John and I can talk, we can look at it. Oh, we do have the side, we do have the side windows.
Which is good. I just, the, right. The more we can incorporate clear glass into the Coolidge side, the better.
So if there's some way to make that the parent seating area, you know?
The bench waiting area.
Yeah. So I, and like I said, I have to sit down with John and redraw this. And we actually have a meeting on Thursday morning at some clock to talk about it. So I'll do what we can, but I'll tell you that historically, I have, my pool is certainly heights, it's on a glass wall, and it's a nightmare for me. It's constantly leaking, it starts destroying the bulkhead where the, where the, where the, where the glazing and the drywall meet, that area just decomposes. I'm constantly fixing it. So I try to put these things on, on block walls. Just because it's, just becomes a mess.
Well, it, go ahead.
You've got them right now extending down about a foot above the sidewalk. Is it, is it, I mean, if you could put some, some, some narrower, some narrower features in that area that, and intermix them with maybe higher windows that wouldn't.
John, can we leave these on, on, I mean, I guess we only have to go like six feet, right? We can probably leave the, the higher ones.
I mean, maybe the higher ones would be aesthetically pleasing on the inside of your, as well.
Your glass is ten feet high on the west elevation approximately. So if you have changing.
I don't have to go the whole way with spandrel. I can go, I can leave a nice portion of it, at least three or four feet, at least.
At the top to allow, you know, they're not gonna see.
Yeah.
Activity.
Does that do, I mean, is that activating anything?
No.
Or is it just putting in needless?
Well, I'm, I'm also saying, get something at street level, too. You know, some narrower features in there.
John, was he interested in that wall out, the drywall the whole way up?
Correct. Because that's how, I, I understand what you're saying. There could be a couple of areas of breakpoints.
Yeah.
Actually coming in, not just at the top, but more of a vertical.
And coming out, too.
It wouldn't be ideal, but it would be.
Better.
Better. How does it work with trying to get approvals today? How do we, so how does a city, I get the streetscape itself, but does the city have an ordinance or an actual?
No, we don't. We have draft guidelines right now, which is why I'm asking and not telling.
So what we can do, John, okay, this is, we can leave the top portion of these glass, for sure. We can leave the top portion of these glass, which is probably two or three feet, will fur out the wall, and then we can leave this as an opening, and I think it'll bring some light into the space, and leave, you know, a little bit of, alleviate some of the.
It's only the height of the drop ceiling.
Unless we can switch the, switch it around, but I'm still very concerned.
I, I would be, and that's, that's fine. I would be fine deferring to staff to work with you to come up with a solution that can provide some clear glass along Coolidge and, in the acquitats space. We would definitely want the, the retail and restaurant spaces to remain clear.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
For that even, I mean, I think they need more on the street side. I, I don't like seeing things on the street that are blacked off. I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't like it.
That's my concern, too. The problem is, we can't require you to do it.
I know, but.
I mean, I'm willing to work with you guys, and I'm gonna, I'll talk to you, I'll, we'll send you an email. John can send us an email after we discuss it on Thursday, to see where we're at with, if we can flip it around. I get it. I like it. And then we'll talk to our glazing experts and say, how do we, how do we find windows that can withstand, you know, there might be some windows that are, have some sort of gas in them that keep the fogging from happening and stuff of that nature.
Well, if you could come up with something like that, that would be ideal.
That has more to do with HRC and how it's properly installed, too.
It is. It does. But it doesn't matter. I'm always running ninety-one degree air. So, and I, my humidity, relative humidity is about fifty-five percent in there. Put that ninety-one degree air, it's that sub-zero air on the outside, and I get fog. It's like I just.
I'm not saying to put the pool up against. I'm just saying that you could leave the pool to the back, but there could be a manner of which you could move the inside walls around, so you don't just look in at a black wall.
It does get foggy.
I'm not gonna deny that.
Even, I mean, in Troy, there's the front doors, there's the parent seating area before you get the glass of the pool, and it's.
It's a dehumidification nightmare. It really is. Plus, if it's ninety-one degrees, that's a warm pool.
Yeah. But even if the changing rooms were not parallel to Coolidge, if you took the changing rooms, I don't know what your internal layout looks like, and made them perpendicular, then that leaves space for maybe a little hall that goes around, or something like that.
Let me ask you a question. You guys have both had your kids in swim lessons. If that, that changing area, you know, you know, well, you said you're at Troy. You know the changing area that's in the rear?
Mm-hmm.
Would you be?
I would love it if it was in the front.
You would, you know, if people could see into it from the streetscape, you wouldn't care.
Well, not, not. But I mean, like, if I didn't have to walk through the whole building to get through it and walk through all the way back in order to change.
So this is sort of when you walk in, it's right there. So it's better than that. But would you be uncomfortable knowing that people could look into the, into that changing area from the streetscape? For us, it's a safety measure, too. We don't really want people, a lot of times, seeing into that area because kids in that area, and people are.
So I don't think we're asking to have clear changing glass, though.
No, but even if it's above, right?
So here's, so the.
Sort of, sort of putting the pool on that side, I have to put changing area that's I, that's my layout.
So the way that the goldfish one is set up is, there are, I don't know if you've been there, but there's open windows along the, which would be the, the wall facing the parking lot. There's open windows. There's a reception area, which is fine. And then there's a waiting, parent waiting area. The changing rooms are perpendicular to the parking lot. And then there's a hall that kind of wraps around. I, I, as a parent, would not have any issue with my kids standing in a bathing suit and, in that area. I mean, you take them to a public pool, what's the difference?
Just when you get into the, well, I've seen a lot of moms just rip stuff off. It's just, so I've seen that happen a lot of times. Let me, let me show you guys.
Common sense.
Yeah, like I said, I could, theoretically, I could move, so this is where we have our changing rooms, right here.
Is that all on Coolidge, then?
This is all on Coolidge right here. So they're all changing. So we're gonna have seventeen changing rooms here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry. So theoretically, we can maybe flip these. We won't have as many. But then you still have people looking into the changing area and just, it just kind of.
What's in the middle area there?
Right here.
Um, down a little bit.
This one?
Yeah.
So this is all our reception, our office, our storage room.
So could you put that on the front window, and put the changing?
You could, but then you're looking in offices, so you have, I have to fur out walls. It wouldn't, you'd be looking into rooms.
You have to, you have, offices have to look into the pool area.
Just make this five foot high.
But that's, you even said it before. You're gonna put in a drop ceiling. I would be looking at a window through a drop ceiling, above a drop ceiling.
At nine feet, nine feet high or something.
It's above it then.
Five feet, then. They'd be able to see something in his face.
So I don't, I don't want to do design by committee here. I, I guess.
No, it's not our job.
Nope, it's not. So if you guys can incorporate some clear glass into the front, that would be our preference, the more, the better.
Like I said, I have no problem, and it'll be a little more expense, because I'm creating windows and drywall, but I have no problem taking it up four or five feet, or as high as I need to get to protect our families, and then leaving all the top open. And, and, and I can, we'll try and toss this around as well, to see if we can come up with something.
Still like some street level, narrow, street level.
Even if you were to take it up four feet, and maybe the bottom portion has a little, like, not a mural, but the, you know, the little waves of applique or something like that. There, there must be a creative way to activate the street front.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I, I don't think this is something we should leave to staff personally.
No. I would not vote for approval on this right now because of that whole situation.
But the, the issue is, though, it meets all the ordinance requirements. This is not in the ordinance.
Not disagreeing, but that ordinance is gonna come into play in the next few months.
But it isn't now.
Situation currently on a lot of locations on 12 Mile, when you look at the room, building, all you see is a blacked out window. And I don't think that draws to the community whatsoever.
Nope.
I, I completely agree, but I just, we don't have the authority to require it.
Well, we do have half the building there.
But, but we do have an applicant who's willing to work with us.
I'm willing to do that top space that way. And like I said, I do have half the building that way, plus both sides, on the side, on the side scale, you know, on Sunny Knoll, whatever. Trust me, I'd love to flip it. I would, I would. I mean, I, I think people seeing into it from the road is advantageous to my business, but from a, from a, from a maintenance perspective, it becomes a nightmare.
And we still have, even though these are guidelines, we still have general ordinance requirements.
So what, what?
Guarding the, the quality of the concrete safe and, and the character of the community.
Well, if we flip it, then now the Coolidge side is all blocked, because of pools on that side.
No, we definitely, we don't want you to do that. No.
Pools, but I think is, I want to be able to look inside and see something. Seeing a black wall, I mean, I got, there's, I can name three or four of them. I don't want to call out people right now, that have done this. And they had windows in the front of it, and they looked fantastic when they built it. And then like, a week later, they're blacked out, and you can't see anything inside it. And that's, that to me, just, just terrifies from the community, doesn't improve it. And, I mean, I love the fact that the building is being built. It's a, it's a great looking building, but you're gonna see half the buildings like this, and you're gonna see the other half is just black. It's not gonna have any to draw you in or draw it to the community. It's, it's.
I'm, I'm with you, but I just don't know how I can rectify it, other than try and do some.
Well, that's where an architect needs to come in. It's gotta be creative. I mean, it's, I don't know.
Okay.
But that's not my call.
Um, so this, sorry to bring up a sticking point, because I think we are pretty much there.
My list here, but.
So this seems to be the issue right now. My concern is just that we, we don't have the authority to come back and do this. What does, what does that do to your, what is your timeline? I assume you want to be building in the spring?
Absolutely.
Okay, so another.
I want to actually start my civil engineering plans that need to go through the counties. That takes months, actually.
Yep. So I think what you've heard, though, from this commission, is that we're generally good with the site layout and everything. We have this one sticking point and a few other minor issues that are cleanup issues.
Sure.
So I don't think there's anything holding you back from starting with your civil engineering plans at this point, and moving into your construction plans. I think coming back to this commission next month to address this one facade issue and your minor cleanup issues, it doesn't sound like that's gonna hold up your process all that much.
I just don't know how I'm going to, I just don't know how I'm going to give you guys what you want. I, I mean, short of moving the pool, I mean, I guess, I mean, it just, it seems like, and that, or, or switching to changing areas, to me, it's a, to me, it's a safety. People from the street side looking into seeing kids that are potentially naked, right? Because you've seen moms do it.
Oh, we.
Right in there, right in, right on, right on the bench. They start taking their clothes off. I've seen it. I see it every day. And it's not something I can tell my mom. So it's just, I don't know how to address it. And I've been saying, we'll leave the top portions clear, and the balance of the building will not be, will not be done. I don't know what's gonna change in that month for me to tell you that. You know, so we can, we can come back in a month, but I don't know where, what my answer's gonna be.
Aren't there just some narrow transition areas on the inside that you could front with, with glass down the street?
So I guess we could take out like a changing room or two, but we're just gonna open up like two windows of glass. But that still gives people to look into that area, right? I mean, into that area where kids are.
So I think some clear glass is better than none.
John, from a.
It's not ideal.
Perspective, we could leave these top of those, right? Or anything above six feet?
We could. We have to raise the ceiling height. But then, like you said, if we, if you eliminate a couple of, eliminate a couple of the changing rooms.
Changing rooms are.
But again, or, to add more glass, but. But again, or, to add more glass, but...
But how, but if we, if we fur this wall out, which we were gonna do anyways to create changing rooms, sorry, let me, let me go. If we fur this wall out, where we're gonna create changing rooms anyways, um, it would have to go to like six feet to protect our customers who are in the changing rooms? And then anything above six feet could be clear glass, right? You don't see any excessive cost with that or a problem with that, do you?
No, we can, uh, we can leave the, the, wherever the mullion is, which is the first eight feet, and then the two...
How, how high are these, how high are these glasses right here?
This is eight foot right here.
And then is this...
This is ten foot.
And that's what?
And that goes...
Okay, so what if, what if we, so this is eight feet to here, John, and here?
Yes.
So what if we, everything above eight feet, all across the whole board? We left, we left open.
Here's another thing, I, I, if you, if you have, uh, what would you use at street level? Then the brick, the, uh, the...
Well, the street levels, yeah, the street level C-brick right here, and then this is all glass and mullions.
All right, um, would you be adverse to kind of tasteful art on, on the side of the building?
No.
Like a, like a, an artistic window film or something like that, that would provide you with the opacity that you need, but would...
So you guys, so you're saying I can do some sort of murals here?
I think that we're suggesting that's an option. Is that allowable under the ordinance?
We just don't like the black glass.
Uh, yeah, I'm with you. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do...
Activating, I don't think past adjusting clear glass.
Our corporate office has, um, our corporate office has some window clings that we could use, but they're colorful, they're signage, right? That's, that comes into play.
Does it say aquatats on it?
Most of them, yes, or all of them, yes. So if you guys wanna give me that, right, I'm happy to do it.
See through them? I mean, is it something that they would put on a clear...
I'd have to look into it. Don't get, don't quote me a hundred percent here, but I believe you cannot see through them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that would be, but my, my alternative was, so this is eight feet to this first rung, across the board, and it gives me another four feet here, what is this, twelve, and then fourteen, six feet here, four feet here on both sides, that could all be clear.
Mark, Mark, I have a question. By looking at this rendering here, look at this rendering here. The amount of glass on the, on the Coolidge side facade, right, that just barely met the city requirements, the fifty percent.
It's forty, but yeah, you're at about fifty.
So we're fifty. Look how much glass is on this facade. So I, I'm starting to, I, I, the ordinance is written wrong about forty, eighty percent of the total facade, because a lot, I mean, so how about...
Two eighty percent.
Correct, forty to eighty percent, which is, so I should add even more glass to be eighty percent.
No, no, you're, you're, you're fine, you're fifty percent.
No, I, I know. Correct, I did meet the requirement, but, do I, does it include the parpet or not?
Yeah, it goes all the way to the par, all the way to the coping.
So how about if I, it doesn't...
That's the way it's written. Now, again, doesn't mean it's the right way to be written, but that's the way it's written.
I don't, it doesn't make sense.
Well, but you, you, you comply, so there's no argument.
I, I know, but the argument is this, if it's actually doesn't meet, if it's actually from zero to eight feet, I would need a lot less glass here, and that's the issue where we're coming across. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, the whole point of the forty to eighty percent was to engage the street front with what's going on, and that's what we're hearing here.
Right.
And that's the whole point, is to engage, we want from two feet to eight feet to ten feet, we want glass. Now, we know buildings are taller than that, so back when that ordinance was written, uh, the numbers came up forty to eighty percent. At, at eight or ten feet of the complete facade, at eight or ten feet, you're almost a hundred percent, ninety percent glass. Wonderful. Okay? It's a number game.
So the idea, we can go back and say, we need less glass now because of our purpose of our, of our interior buildout. Do you guys understand the, the conversation?
You can go down to forty percent by the ordinance, yes. You're at about fifty percent now.
Well, it's, it's the totals, it's the total building.
That doesn't solve it.
That don't solve anything. I like the glass. I don't wanna go down.
So personally, I would prefer some sort of...
You want to see through more, but you understand that.
No, I, I, I think we wanna activate the street front. So I would prefer some sort of artistic film to go over the bottom portion of the windows that you need covered. I don't want it to be a giant advertisement for aquatats. And that's gonna come into your signage requirements as well and get into that. That would be my preference, and I guess my suggestion, and I, I think you're kind of thinking that same thing.
Absolutely.
You're thinking that, you're thinking that I use clear glass instead of spandrel, and then I put up some artistic wave or...
Something like that.
Or blue pebbles, or something that looks like it's stained glass, that you can't see through but looks good.
Bunch of kids having fun.
Okay, so how high do you want that?
Well, how, you need, you said it needed to be what, four or five feet to cover the changing?
That needs to be at least, at le, well, I mean, I guess...
You said six at the most.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but if, but if I, John, can we move this down so that I can at least, so you just hear me out, this is at eight feet, right? If I move this down to seven, I use spandrel on the bottom, and then I incorporate something else. It'll cost me a little more money, but I'm happy to do it. And the reason I say that is, sometimes when you put those things up, they fall down.
Okay.
And then they fall down, and then you're looking into a changing room. Okay?
That's, that's fine, I mean...
So I can use spandrel up to seven, and then I have no problem working with staff to design something tasteful that shows a blue wave. Maybe you guys could give me a little bit of aquatats love, and then I can like, I can, I can, we can all come together. Like, I could put a few things up, like two or three of those ones that say birthday parties, or, you know, swim lessons, or something of that nature.
So if, if you go, if you're going or asking to go above the, the ordinance allotments for signage, then you're gonna have to go to the ZBA, so I, we can't grant that.
You don't wanna do that.
I'll put up the wave, a blue wave.
We're just, we're just trying to say, like, we get that it can't, that you're going to really struggle making it clear, so if you can't make it just clear for us, make it pretty.
But I want it to be seven, I wanna move that mullion down, John, or whatever that's called, down to seven feet, okay? And make that bottom all spandrel, and then I can work with staff to make sure that it's something that's tasteful, that you guys want on the, on the exterior. But my concern is not making that bottom portion spandrel, and when those fall off, because invariably they do, I, nobody's looking into a changing room.
So that's, that's fine with me. I, I defer to the rest of the commission too, um, but you'd be comfortable with that being a condition of approval?
Can you, can you, can you get this to seven?
Seven or eight, that doesn't make any difference.
So, can you make the seven feet?
Yeah, it's a door height.
But there, I, the difference of making changes are, oh, that's fine, but they're making it as a condition.
I'm asking if you would be amenable to that condition. I'm not saying it...
Would I be amenable to it if you guys were gonna give us approval tonight? Uh, I mean, I, if, they're giving me, they're giving me something like some, it's basically advertising. I put on my window, it just doesn't say my name. It could look like a swim school, it could look like a pool.
So the condition would be that, as long as you're agreeable, that as much of the top portion and would be the clear vision glass is, is feasible. And the bottom portion could be spandrel, but with some sort of artistic film to provide some variety along the street front.
But it doesn't have to go the whole entire length.
It would just go over the aquatats portion.
Can we do it, can we do it just in this portion here? The main portion of the aquatats?
That's, to me, that's fine. I mean, we have other members up here.
Because there is more cost in it, but I would just, I mean, I think it would look, I think too much is too much, right, on the building. I think this would look nice. It's kind of the center point of our, a focal point of our business, and this is kind of secondary.
You can get too gaudy with this stuff.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine with me. I, I guess, how does everyone else feel? I'm fine with that.
I'm still biting my tongue.
I, I think we're just...
I think it's gonna deter...
He meant the ordinance, and now we're just getting nitpicky about what we want it to look like, so...
I do think...
I think something tasteful with the guidelines in mind, and staff can approve what they think is tasteful.
That's fine with me.
Some sort of backlighting behind it or something, instead of just doing black. With a nice light blue color backlight.
Listen, I really don't wanna make it a condition, but I'm standing here telling you that I will work with you guys to do something tasteful on that section of it.
So you won't have a condition being that you will work with staff to come up with some way to activate the street front?
I mean, I gotta take guidance here from Tim and, and John.
That's a pretty wide berth as far as the conditions.
Right. It doesn't have to be a film, it just...
Staff would approve it. We just don't wanna get into a, you know, some type of situation where we present thirty things, and it's still not something that anybody can agree upon, right? There has to be some type of limits or acceptability, and I don't know...
Can I ask staff if, if you're clear on the desire of this commission in this, on this issue?
Yes, I mean, you want as much clear glass as humanly possible, based on the layout of the, the design of aquatats, and I think we can try to work with that. The only concern with any kind of decorative film is that it can't be any kind of commercial message. It can't be aquatats. Anything with, even with a wave or kids running in bathing suits could convey a commercial message, so we'd have to be very careful about allowing that, um, type of screening without conveying a commercial message.
Do you have any other ideas off the top of your head that would activate it while still...
A planter would help.
A planter, something like that. If we were gonna go for window screening, some kind of floral decorative thing that would, you know, act in lieu of streetscapes, but I don't know how amenable that would be for any kind of, um, for, for the applicant themselves.
Are you saying, like, you're moving away from the film and saying some, some actual...
I don't think he heard you when, when you gave your explanation.
I apologize. So if you were to, you know, using some kind of film over the windows, it couldn't convey any kind of a commercial message. So if you were going to do something, you could do a, a raised planter box for flowers of streetscape, or, you know, even the, the film on the windows of, of flowers, but I don't know, that's just one item. I don't know if that's something you'd be consider.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather do something like aquatic themed, right?
The only concern with that is that it can't convey a commercial message, because you, you get into your sign... But even still, any kind of a commercial message, so we get into the sign requirements, and the maximum you're allowed for a window coverage in that district is fifty percent. So we get into some, the, the signage issues.
Yeah, so I was thinking, I mean, to be honest, I'm thinking like a wave, you know, like just something that conveys water, aquatics. It doesn't have any my name on it. It doesn't have any, it doesn't have my name on it, or it's not an advertisement, it's just a, it's just a...
To, to me, a commercial message says, who, what is the name of this business, why are they better than the competitors? If you're just announcing that it, it's an aquatic facility, I, I don't regard that as a commercial message. I think it's telling us what it is, but it's not a commercial message.
There's also landscaping along that portion of the building. I know one of the comments is that one is in conflict with the door, but outside of that, we do, you know, we do have landscaping proposed along that portion of the facade.
If I could ask another question here, ordinance-wise, um, is there anything to prevent them from tinting that glass?
No.
No.
Yeah, so...
No, we're asking.
The only thing that covers it is the signage. It can't be more than fifty percent.
We're between a rock and a hard place, and, and depending on the good graces.
I'm willing to work with you guys in good faith. I really don't wanna make it a condition.
Okay.
I feel like it's going to, do you see how sticky it is right here between us?
Yeah.
You know, but I'm, I'm here telling you, I've done this before with multiple cities, I know what it means. I'm happy to do some, I'm happy to put the spandrel up to seven feet and then do some sort of wave. Some, as long as it's aquatic themed, I'm, I'm happy to do it. I don't wanna put up flower pots that look like, you know, daisies coming out of a flower pot. I don't think it goes with our, our building. But I understand it can't be, it can't have anything that's, and it can't have a commercial message. I get it, but I don't think having an ocean with a sunset is a commercial message. So, you know, you know what I'm saying.
I understand.
Or could it mean that?
Or could it mean that? Well, will the staff say, I don't know, that kind of suggests you have a swim pool in there.
So we're, we're gonna, we can't require you to do this. We're asking you to do it. We appreciate that you're here in good faith and willing to work with the staff on this item. If you don't wanna make it a condition, we, we can't make it a condition.
Yeah, I'd prefer not to, I mean...
It will be in the minutes of the meeting, so we will have some record that we discussed this, and...
Respectfully, I, I would not like to do it, but I will definitely work with anybody I need to, to make sure that it's, is something tasteful that you guys want. And I have no problem with the expense. Um, we actually work with a company called Sticker Genius, and we're working on a mural for our CMU block walls in all of our pools, to create a mural, so we can create a mural, we can do some sort of sticker on the exterior to create a mural that's similar to what we're doing on the inside. An ocean theme with a whale and that kind of stuff, that you see it.
Which door is the main door to aquatats?
There'll be a main door, I believe, on this side, right here.
Okay.
Well, just one, one last comment. The, the existing ordinance does say that the architecture signs orientation materials have to be consistent with master plan objectives and the design of neighboring sites and buildings. You know, I think that does give us at least some leverage to, um, I mean, it's vague, but, um, it gives us some control over the architecture and the features, and, um, so that they're at least not, um, they don't clash with, uh, desirable land use objectives along Coolidge, so, um, you know, I think, uh, conceivably, we could reserve approval on that basis until we hear the plan. I don't know if that's what the desire of everybody else is to do, but I, I don't think we're helpless to not insist on certain improvements here.
So what is the desire of the commission, then? I think we're kind of at a point where we've, we've talked this over enough.
About it.
Is someone ready to make a motion?
I'm looking at it.
I mean, could we make a motion that approves a site plan but does not approve the interior fit out? I mean, I'm not sure how we can do that.
No, it's, it's all...
That's, I mean, it's contingent upon interior fit of how they decided to lay out their building.
I mean, we're down to this one issue.
Right.
And, and I think the message to you is, you can go ahead with everything else. We're, we're, you know, getting your approvals from the county and all of that. But we, I mean, I personally would like to see what you come up with before giving final site plan approval. That would be my, I'm not speaking for anybody else up here, but I'd screen what I like to do.
Are we just doing like a straw pool?
I mean, is there anything in the master plan that says, I mean, because this just says windows, right, and I know we'd like to see them clear, but I don't, I don't know that anything, you know, much like I'm nervous about the parking, nothing really gives me a whole lot of room to do anything about that. I think we're at the same place with the windows.
I agree, right.
And with the windows, they are, you did add landscape in front of them already. I mean, they're...
There's, there's like even halfway down.
So it's not just gonna be a sidewalk with a black wall. You guys are planning landscapes, so that's where I'm, I think we're getting caught up on these windows, but...
So like I said...
And he's...
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, and, and they're willing to work with staff to, to make them look the best they can. I don't think they're gonna be blackout windows, tacky with nothing in front of them, in my opinion.
So like I said, um, we are seeking approval for a number of reasons. A, to get our engineering started, B, my financing is contingent upon this, to get this project forward and close on it in February. So I need to get site plan approval, and if you guys make me come back in a month, I don't know what's gonna be different. I really don't, but like I said, I'm here to stay in Berkeley, I need friends in the city, and Erin's worked, I've worked with Erin, she knows that I'm a, a team player. Whatever you guys want me to do that's tasteful on the exterior there, I will do it. Seven feet of spandrel and into the windows, and we have the top windows that look into the space. Or at least bring some light and streetscape into the space. You'll get to see into the building, type of thing.
So at this point, somebody needs to make a motion, either to postpone or approve. I, I don't think we're at denial.
No.
Um, and then we kind of see where everyone falls. Now, the problem with that is if we make a motion to approve and then it fails...
Five people.
Yeah, right, you need five of the votes up here, since we're missing several commissioners. If it fails, then I guess we can make a motion to postpone, and, and that's where we would be. So, did you wanna perhaps try the approval and see how that goes, and then if that doesn't pass, at this point, we can make a motion to postpone.
Everybody's always looking at me.
But weren't you kind of like, you were ready?
You were ready to do it.
If it didn't, the guideline, maybe postpone, where do we stand next month when we come here, and we've talked about this ad nauseam, and it's like, what are you...
Well, I, I don't, I don't know what else to tell you. If you don't have the votes tonight, you don't have the votes tonight.
Totally, but I just don't know, I'm, I'm trying to spring the votes into my...
You know, uh, we, I don't think we have the authority ultimately to deny this if you're within the, uh, four corners of the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm not here to say that to you guys, but...
That's correct, we would not.
We have, we do have the, the responsibility to approve the site plan, and we do, we, I think we have a ethical obligation to follow the guidelines, uh, and that's where we're coming from, but I, I don't think we can...
The community's saying, I will work with you guys to do it. I'm not just saying that I'm gonna leave here with my site plan and go, you know, who cares what they say now? Now, I guess, still gotta build the place and live within, you know, the, I still have to be neighbors with you guys in the city we're at for thirty years on our story, you know? So it's important that we have a good working relationship, and I find that works for me in all cities.
I have a question. Is there a chance, I mean, this is not, I know I'm not supposed to be asking this, but like the north portion of it, that corner, could somehow be opened up so you could see inside of there?
Which one are you talking about?
You have the big span in the middle where you were planning on putting it. If you could even get the north portion of it to be that little tiny portion there.
That's what I was thinking.
That would really open it up a little bit, so it doesn't look like you have one mass span of black, darked-out glass. And that would open it up a quick bit.
That's the main...
That's what I'm saying, it could be the door moved there or something.
On the east elevation, you're saying in, north elevation or east?
Just that corner.
It's that north, northeast corner.
That's why I asked you.
These here, put some more bench here.
Be the door.
Not really looking into...
Or move the, move the main entrance into it or something.
Put the door there.
That, 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 that's up to you.
Actually, we do require a door.
We're still looking into a changing area where there's kids, um...
I mean, even if, like you said, you do like a...
It's not as much of the changing area.
Yeah, I mean...
It's a smaller portion of the changing area. It's, how long, how wide is this, John? Twelve feet?
Uh, sixteen, eighteen.
Something I could take under advisement and, and possibly do.
My, if, my thing is, it's a large span of the building that's gonna be blocked off to the street. I, I need something. That's, for me to pass this thing, I would need something to approve, saying that I'm not just gonna block off the street. We're looking at a city right now that has a massive problem with the streets, what we have in the buildings. You can't see in a lot of it. And it, it doesn't invite the community, so if we could open up a little, that's all I'm asking for.
Just give me, just give me one second, let me just try to...
Sure, take a minute. Does anyone need a break? No? Okay.
Do you?
It's already night.
No, I just, I just thought this would be an opportune time.
Yeah?
No, heavy entrance. I'm saying, just push this here.
Is here or no, they still want it?
We have to fish or cut bait, so...
But then you're losing, you're losing...
It's not losing these, I'm putting them right here.
There's no room, right? See, there's no room.
You can shove it to that side.
Okay, that's good. How far, Brian, one and a half foot versus five feet? What are you, what are you flipping?
Can't.
Trust me, we're not trying to be rude or difficult.
No, I, I'm really not, I'm trying to do it.
These operations, Brian, we have to try to explain to them that there's a pool, changing, bathrooms, chemical rooms.
That goes into our floor plan.
All you have is, to add, all you have is the entrance as you walk in is where glass, because this has to be on a, on a, on a solid wall. This has to be on a solid wall. Pools have to be solid walls, so what, what are you left with? How many walls out of four?
One.
And, so, so you, you wanna have the whole back of the building blocked, but your parking's there and your entrance, it's... Unless you're...
I, I mean, I, like I said, I can try to do it, I don't know, I've got, we've, I guess we've gotta sit down and try and reconform this, but I can't say yes or no. Uh, I apologize, I really want to. I just, it's hard for me to make, um, it's hard for me to make a promise to you guys right now, because our corporate office approves these floor, floor plans.
Sure.
Right? They, we actually have to physically send in them, we work with their architects.
And help design it.
They design it, which this is the design that they said, yes, let's go with this. So for me to make that promise to you guys or make it a condition of approval, I could violate that, and I don't wanna do that.
Okay.
I want, I want to, I really want to, but I just, I don't know how I can make that promise and then come back and you guys are gonna say, well, you didn't do it.
Do you wanna see the glass seeing the entire space, or they, can they look into a storage room?
I...
Guys, it's...
No.
An office.
I, I do like, I do think that our, our medium is seven feet of spandrel... I do like...I do think that our medium is seven feet of spandrel, some tasteful artwork here, and then up we have seven feet of glass here, four feet of glass here, and four feet of glass here. You're not looking into the main floor, but you're looking into at least, you see lights, you see activity, you see something that's not just all locked out.
That's fine with me. I think that's a fair compromise since we can't require you to do any of this. I just don't know if you have five people up here that agree with that.
I know, but postponing something...
Hold on, guys, hold on, guys.
Parking.
Postponing on something that...
Features that you...
Oh, I got those two here. Is the approval or postponing? What is the reason for postponing it rather than approving it? Is it because of the glass? If that's the case, that's not part of what we're discussing.
Okay, we're going around circles. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Yes, please do.
I mean, we'll just...we're just going around here before it gets adversarial. I'll make a motion to approve PSP 0819 based on the four findings. The supporting documents demonstrate requirements of zoning ordinance, city ordinance standards requirements can be met, subject to the conditions noted below. The development of a lot will utilize property within the seat pride, indoor commercial recreation for families, as well as retail and dining experiences. Off-street parking has been provided to satisfy, with a small S, the multiple uses within the structure not be a burden to the surrounding areas.
Commissioner Smith, can I interrupt for a second?
Please do.
I think you're reading the findings for the postponed table motion.
No, this is approved.
Oh, oh, it's in both. Never mind.
They're approximately the same. Number four will not have any unreasonable detriment or a negative impact upon the site, surrounding area, community as a whole. Now, conditions. There's a lot of conditions here. Did a fine job of doing them. Zero setback outdoor seating. I don't even know why that's a condition, but item one is a...we have that here. Very free parking spaces meet the numerical...that was on the engineering plan, and that's part of, you know, they must meet all the comments on our city engineer, our DPWs. We've...the third is location method of signage for compact car. That goes away.
Yeah.
I think we talked about that. Bicycle rack. I guess there is not a bicycle rack design proposed. I personally don't care, but we do have one, a location proposal. You do have one? But we never saw it.
I take care of the bicycles.
There's the city detail that, you know, we're happy to...
The beautiful bent black tube. That's fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's the standard, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine. Some communities want fancy sculptures, but that's fine. Engineers talked about replacement plan for sidewalk areas, certain flags. We did not talk too much about raising the parking islands to include landscaping. We'll need to discuss that. Planning commission, colored materials. I think we're in agreement that the materials, including the siding, are fine. Percentage of windows, that's what we're spinning around and around. There's a noncondition that they will work with staff to come up with a resolution on the east facade. That is a noncondition.
But so noted in the minutes.
But so noted in the minutes. We've talked about mechanical equipment being sufficiently screened with a parapet. That's fine. I did. Number 10 talks about reconfigure front entry of AquaTots. I believe they did that with their landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's on the engineering report. Additional landscaping of the parking islands, northwest corner property. I thought I understood that they were maintaining the existing landscaping on the northwest corner of the property.
There's an existing tree that's to remain, and we're happy to put in some shrubbery and flowers.
So add some shrubbery and/or flowers. Clarification is shielding the pole lighting adjacent residential...okay, that was, 12 goes away. We're satisfied with the photometrics. Now, we're reading this and everybody else can't read this, so. Additional comments. The planning commission would like the spaces, the depth of the parking spaces be reduced to 18 feet. Add that two feet to the north landscaping, to the sidewalk on the north and the west sides of the building. So spaces all get to reduce 18. I'd like to see the west property line get reduced to 18 so more people aren't running into the wall that's already tilting over. We'll get to that. So I'd also like the west property line to reduce, the curb line to be pulled in. So all spaces will be 18 feet deep.
Okay.
Beautiful. And we talked about the northeast corner, the landscaping there to be addressed, the masonry base is in poor condition. Relandscape the northeast corner as a condition. The Sunny Hill Drive, discourage right turn on the outside, whether that's signage or curb cut, work with the city engineers how that is to be addressed, but we do want to discourage right-hand turn out of the parking onto Sunny Hill. West green wall. If you honestly feel you can repair that wall, extend the height of the wall to the sass faction of our city engineers, fine. I don't believe you will. Big section of it's tilting in, but we want that to be addressed in some way.
I do too. I don't think it fits with our look of our building.
Yeah.
And unless it's sturdy and you can do it, and it's some crazy number to repair it, I have no problem, you know, if I'm going to make a judgment call, it's not about money. It's about really, is it safe and does it work for what we're trying to do on the development?
So those are the conditions that we had in Ms. Schluto's fine write-up.
And if I just might add one more, just final approval from HRC, the city engineer, DPW, and the fire marshal.
Yes, I thought I said that, but I...okay, thank you.
Just so it's there.
Yeah. But I was going to say, the items you brought up, the items that our engineering consultant and DPW have on their letters, and then these parking and screening and Sunny Hill Drive, the items that we brought up, those are a lot of conditions, and one noncondition that we talked about, so.
I second it.
Okay. So it's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Because of the fact that those are part of the master plan DDA, do those technically...are we allowed to work with those at all, or is it...
The design guidelines?
Yes.
No, they're in draft form.
When are those passing? This is the second one we're on, like this.
Right, so they're in draft form, so they are very much a guideline at this point, and once they're adopted, then we will have the ability to ask applicants to comply, or to require applicants to comply.
Or assist.
Yeah. Okay, so any discussion? No? Okay, Ms. Schluto, could you call the roll, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Unfortunately, yes. I don't have a choice.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Welcome.
We're looking forward to it, so.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I will work with the city, please want to go. I get it. So I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Yeah. Moving on then, we have a few discussion items. I know, it took a long time.
You'll need one.
Well, we can hopefully get through these next couple of things fairly quickly. So Ms. Schluto, we have the review and discussion of ordinance amendment for public hearing notices. Do you want to briefly go over that?
Very briefly.
Very briefly.
Very briefly.
There you go. Thank you all again.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. I would like to reference my December 5, 2019 review memo. This was something that we have already kind of enacted as a internal policy here with the city, is that anytime there's a public hearing, not only do we, of course, we fulfill the state's requirements through the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act to post the public hearing notice in the newspaper of mass circulation, notify property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. We're already complying with that. Additionally, what we are doing is we are posting that public hearing notice on the city website, and also we've been posting a temporary sign on the project, on the property of the subject site within a certain amount of time, so that way people within the area, drivers, whatever, who are unaware of the public hearing notice, either in the newspaper or on the website, and also who live outside that 300-foot boundary, they're aware of it and they can voice their concerns if they do have any. So that's something that the city has been doing since July, when I started, but in order to make sure that this is something that continues beyond our administration, I felt it was important that we codify that in the zoning ordinance. Additionally, there are...currently, the notification requirements for public hearing are located within, one, two, three, four separate sections of the zoning ordinance, and I felt that if we were going to make any amendments to the public hearing notices that we eliminate the sections that are redundant and we just have it in one section. That way, if there's any other additional changes that need to be met, we won't inadvertently miss one or two, and then there's inconsistency across the ordinance.
Okay. Commissioner comments, discussion?
I have one question. My only question is website, mail notice, newspaper, that's all 15 days. What made you decide the temporary sign should only be seven?
Well, at that time, when we just have a new sign that withstand the elements a little bit better, but before that, we were using basically a piece of paper taped onto a sign, and so the elements were making those signs difficult for people to read. But also, we looked at it in terms of, we don't want to, people to look at it and think that it's a foreclosure sign or anything that's dangerous or adverse on the property. We felt seven days was enough time. It's a weekend, a week, for people to know what's going on and to ask questions, but not so much where it's a beacon on a property saying, hey, there's a thing, there's a thing. So we just felt that a less amount of time for the public hearing sign was appropriate.
I think this is great, so it's good to see this in the ordinance. Any other comments?
I like how it's in one spot instead of several, and thank you for doing this.
So the next step, I assume, would be to come before us for official consideration?
Yes, if you would like, we can set the public hearing for next month, but we do have three commissioners who are absent, so if you would like to bring this back in further draft form for discussion, I'm more than happy to do that.
What's the will of the commission? I think the other commission would be supportive.
Yeah, I don't think, I can't see anything that's problematic with it, so.
I'd be fine setting the public hearing if someone wants to move that.
Sure. I'll set a public hearing to discuss ordinance, zoning, what's the name of it, public hearing notice requirements.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Could you call the roll, please?
Do we need to vote on all this?
I don't know.
No, no, no.
You're asking me to set a public hearing.
Set a public hearing.
Okay.
It sounds so official.
Or eager.
It does. Okay, we have one more discussion item, and I'll just close out my agenda.
Yes, this one, so I'd like to reference my December 10 letter. This is something that we discussed at the last meeting in terms of what projects are required for site plan approval. I have included the review language for Section 138-677, which is projects requiring all site plan approval, and then 138-678. There are some inconsistencies on what constitutes full site plan approval through the planning commission and also what can be done administratively. So there are some discrepancies that need to be addressed, but then the planning commission decided that they would like to delve deeper into the section altogether. So I did provide the entire Division 7 of the ordinance for review, but given that it's a little later in the evening, we might not want to delve too far into all the language this evening, so.
So this is an item I think some of the missing commissioners would want to weigh in on?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's who I was thinking of.
Well, and we have different language that we like really worked on for a while, but it's buried in the design overlay.
That's a separate thing, yeah.
No, but remember, we went back and forth about what was allowed, so that never got approved. That language was just kind of hanging there about what we were going to allow for...
Can I just make one comment? I just don't know if it's a Division 7, I may be reading it wrong, but Section 138-678? Under number two, it says the number or size of the windows are increasing. That's an administrative review?
Yes.
Okay. I was just making sure that it wasn't, not increasing.
So I think we would all be in support of making sure we have consistency across all of these different sections. It's just a matter of maybe revisiting where that line is. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So my preference would be to defer this discussion until we have a full commission.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
So if everyone's good with that, yes?
Mm-hmm.
That would be the direction.
Okay. I'll delve a little deeper into it for the next meeting, so we have a little bit more direction, if that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yes.
That would be great.
I do have one question. Are we aware of the...is there any law, any case law or anything like that on use of administrative approval versus full planning commission, or is it pretty much completely up to our discretion how to draw that line?
It's really up to the discretion of the community and where they want to draw the line. There are some communities that require even just for reoccupancy of a standard use to go for full site plan approval, and others where it's, you know, basically the new construction of a building. So it's really up to the threshold of the community on what they want to monitor and regulate.
Okay. The only comment I have about this is that I think maybe some language in there saying that staff shall have the discretion on a case-by-case basis to put it on the planning commission agenda. In other words, to kick the football to us, you know, if there's something unusual about the project or significant about the project.
There is, in the administrative review. It says in, for an administrative review, the building official and the city planner shall act as the planning commission, and if they can't come to a consensus or if it's beyond the scope of what they're comfortable with, then their review would be denied and it would be then reviewed by the planning commission.
Yeah, I did review that.
Yes.
I'm just saying, maybe there should be an option that you could, right up front, you could do that if you just thought it was advisable.
I agree, that's a good idea. So that then brings us to liaison reports. Mr. Trotto, anything?
Following my insistence that Ms...I apologize to the DDA. Unfortunately, they seem to have the exact same meetings lately as ones that have been picked up every month, so I apologize to the DDA.
Anything?
Yeah.
The discussion on the marijuana ordinance, I believe the zoning was approved for first reading?
First and second. The second reading passed at the city council meeting last night. The licensing portion passed on its second reading last night as well. So the next steps in the process is for the merit point system to be adopted by resolution. We're looking at that at the January meeting.
Okay. Anything, Lisa? Nothing? Mark, anything environmental committee?
We did meet and discussed our plan and a schedule for next year. I think the stormwater projects, the water towns projects will be at the, one of the the stormwater projects, the water towns projects will be at the, one of the top items that we pursue, along with developing certain aspects of the, of the energy plan that the community has adopted. We're not gonna meet this month.
Okay. Commissioner comments then? Anything, Matt?
I will not be here next month.
Good to know, good to know.
Just happy, happy holidays to everyone.
Same for me.
Likewise.
Chime right in.
Party.
Okay, well, it's not gonna be that quick. Couple things. One is quick. On your list of ordinances, let's work that 18 plus two parking space into our ordinance, 'cause that, that's, that's a standard, and we're just not there yet, and it's always a plus to have something like that. And then the second item I'd like to discuss, and I apologize for not being here last month, but I, I think we missed a little bit of an opportunity there regarding parking. And it's kind of contradictory here after what we talked about tonight, but retail parking and multifamily residential parking are completely different animals. And I'm not favoring this particular project at La Salle, but I watched, or I listened to the meeting, and there was a lot, seemed to be there was a lot of talk about those six spaces to the south. They were kind of shoehorned in there. And, you know, all kinds of things, difficult to maneuver, blah, 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 went on for a while, and plus, so it seemed to me to be a little bit of a missed opportunity. Get rid of them. Why do we, why were we insisting on that 110 or whatever spaces? This project, and we know we're overparked. We don't know what it's gonna be. We don't know when it's gonna be, but we are gonna change the parking ordinance at some point. You had, what, 55 units, 110 spaces, six spaces out of, there's a lot of studio units, there's a lot of one-bedroom units, I don't recall the number, but six spaces out of 110 is not a lot when we can take a bike rack and remove two spaces out of 10 spaces for a retail space. That impact is so much more than removing or, you know, potentially getting rid of those six. Now, it would have given us green space, less, there's a, if I remember, there was a, a storm structure in there with piping heading over the, over to the, the drainage field, the storm field. So there's a money-saving thing there, more green space from the south where the, as the church is affected, from the east, from the sidewalk, could have screened the dumpster a lot better. And so, you know, until we get our ordinance settled, I think we should have our eyes open for opportunities like that. Not that we're gonna get another big multifamily project right away, but I think there's an opportunity, and I don't know if there's anything we can do about it at this point in time, but I think there's, we, we missed something that we should have probably talked about at least. So I don't know what anybody else's comments are.
You know, it's interesting, 'cause I think we were talking a few meetings ago about having something like a 10% leeway in parking, and that would have been one of those times, I think, that it would have been used well.
It's only 5%. I mean, it's not that big of a, big of a thing.
So to have the ability for the planning commission to modify the parking requirements slightly up to a certain percentage, or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
I would be in support of that.
You know, especially in the spirit that we're, you know, that's one thing, but in the spirit that we are gonna reduce it at some point.
Correct.
I firmly believe. When? Who knows?
Yeah, hopefully soon, but right.
There's a long list of items that we have to.
I know, sorry.
But, you know, yeah, we should have something that says in a situation, 'cause that was just dumb spaces. There's a bury-free space there. The only thing they get is 10 steps. There's no, there's useless bury-free space there.
Right, but they had to meet the requirements, so they needed the spaces.
Yeah, they could move it over, but, you know, yeah.
When you say missed opportunity...
Well, the missed opportunity to talk about, why have those six spaces? Make a green space. You'd like the green space, and...
We did talk about that.
But, but there was a missed opportunity. We couldn't do anything, or maybe we could. I really don't know.
I don't think we could, but...
I don't, I don't know.
I don't think we can.
Wouldn't it have been underneath the requirement if we had?
Yes.
Yes, they would have, but you're right in that it was a missed opportunity in the sense that the ordinance kind of tied our hands.
Yeah.
We were never given the opportunity.
Similar to tonight, though.
Similar to tonight, yeah.
Yes.
So I just want to make, you know, like, like tonight, we have some concerns about the parking for this commercial, and I agree 100%, but that's a completely different animal than what we're looking at in multifamily. And it'd be really something as a win-win-win if that weren't there, those six spaces, so. And it wouldn't be a detriment to the, to the project at all.
Agreed.
Yeah, so just wanted to bring that out. So I'm done now.
Thanks. Go ahead.
If I may. Thank you. We had talked about a, an ordinance looking at that type of modification or that kind of authority given to the planning commission, but it was discussed where we didn't want to do it in kind of a piecemeal situation. So I, I'd like to broach that subject again, if you would like to see something like that more immediately for these types of projects, or wait and hold off until the entire parking section can be looked at.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How, really, really baseline ballpark, how long do you think it would take to go through the parking?
Ideally?
Long time.
It's gonna take some time. And honestly, with the, the marijuana, the La Salle, the AquaTots?
Master plan.
The master plan, those things are, are time-consuming. I'd really like to delve into all of the parking stuff and get it to you very quickly, but if we have another multifamily development drop-off plans tomorrow, other things, things take the back burner.
I, I don't know that we should make huge ordinance changes before the master plan is done at this point. I mean, that might direct whole sections of the...
As far as like the parking standards?
The parking standards need to be changed, but I have a feeling that's something we're gonna contemplate as part of the master plan. We have the parking analysis that was provided as part of the downtown plan. I assume that's gonna be built on at this point. So it'd be great to get some clear direction as to where we should go with the whole parking standards. I think we're still in agreement that we don't want to make a whole bunch of piecemeal changes to the ordinance, but maybe quick fixes that allow us to have a little flexibility might make sense.
In that kind of a situation, 'cause there it is, and there's nothing we can do.
And that could maybe hold us over until we are able to tackle the whole thing. Is that clear?
That is, yes.
Yeah, and, pardon me, but I, I get the impression from past discussions of zoning and site plan approval, that there's still perceived lack of parking in the commercial district.
Oh, yeah.
I think there's a perceived lack of parking.
Perceived, and especially in some locations. But here's a case where...
Right.
Yeah, so if we could do something that gives us, and I don't think anybody would argue with that, so.
Not on the record.
Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good holidays, everyone.